I am fixing.
All it should be.
We want to check.
Heather, can you hear us?
Yes. Yes, okay, excellent. All right, well, we have a quorum. We have a couple of people running a little bit late, but I will call to order the September 5th, 2023, meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee. We begin with public comment. Guidelines for public comment are found in P E D H and B E D H dash E of our policy manual. Is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment? If so, you can put your name and address and town in the chat and unmute yourself and let us know. If you're calling on the phone, you can unmute yourself and let us know if you'd like to make a public comment. All right, hearing none. Is anyone in person like to make a public comment? No public comment tonight. We will close public comments. Chairman's report. I'm gonna keep it kind of simple, but I've been reflecting on our our workshop together and first business meeting in August. I've emptied out my binder and put all of last year's papers into a separate folder and I've got a nice light binder ready to go. Had a little refresher on Robert's Rules of Order, which honestly, if we were to take that, like do that very, very seriously, we'd need serious training on it because there's a lot there. But we're starting where we ended last year, really. That's we're ahead of the game by knowing exactly where things were left off and that we're not gonna need six or eight months to get to the the work we have to do, which is great. So the what I would just leave with you with Chairman's Report is we don't have to answer right now, but some things to think about. I know I'd asked this last year. I'll ask it again. What do you as a committee want to hear from me in Chairman's Report? I can, there's no set guidelines to this. I can tell you anything, you know, what I've been doing, where we are with something, but it'd be helpful to have some direction. This can just be emailed to me. Also, as communicating to the community, that's something that we had to do a lot more at the end of last year. We, you know, had talked potentially about doing something with the cricket, that sort of thing. But I'm interested in what our committee would like for the chairperson to be reporting out on a regular basis. And then from there, in terms of, we're gonna talk about what we're prioritizing this year for work, but in terms of efficiency and time when like, what do you want from me as chairperson? Do we want to have pretty tight meetings? Do we want to have them be more loose? We can do any of this, but I just need some direction from our committee. So again, not something we have to answer right now, but but my report right now is seeking information. So that's something to be thinking on and it might come up in the course of our conversation later. And that's all I have for our chairman's report, except that our operating protocols and lesson until we change them remain the same. And I will just start over again because we actually got through the entire thing over the course of the meetings last year. We timed it well. So I will read the first one to start the school year off for us with the the header that as elected members of the Manchester Essex School Committee, we along with the superintendent, accept the trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of our district receive the best possible education. We are continually focused on this goal at all times. We hereby commit to the following when conducting our business. We will, and the first section is, support the educational welfare and well-being of all students, first task, represent the needs, interests, and achievement of all students in the district and place the students' interests above all others in decisions while remaining within the limitations of a voter-approved budget. So next time we'll have someone else read and go through as we have been doing. And that is it for my chairman's report. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Let's see, the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda for including, excuse me, to include warrants for vouchers fiscal year 23, 1085 and 1086, and fiscal year 24, 1010, 1011, and 1012, and also the minutes for August 8, 2023. Is there a motion?
So much.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. Subcommittee reports, elementary facilities. I mean, it's really your good news to share. Would you like?
Having it as a formal agenda item.
Yeah.
So we can just.
We can just.
Hang on till we get there.
Yep. Finance Subcommittee, Anna and I did attend a collaboration group meeting a week ago Thursday. We're running into the issue right now that I have not received the sign-off from everyone who had attended on the summary that went out. So I don't know if we want to report out on that, but the, I think there's a couple of things we have to kind of note. One is, as I had sent out an email about that our September 19th meeting will need to be abbreviated in order to accommodate a all-boards meeting, which is not convenient for every single person and it's not going to be. We know that. But it's really the only time that we could get buy-in from the whole group. And then the other part, the other main thing to report back is that in response to our response from from the, I think it was July 21st meeting, we had requested that the collaboration group meetings be utilized the silent observer format so that all stakeholders could participate in some way. That was roundly rejected. That was not so few reasons. One, in fact, let me just make sure I do this right if we're gonna do it at all. One of the reasons was that people were very concerned that it wouldn't be compliant with open meeting law, keeping in mind that when we do that for negotiations, we have the right to have that be a post-meeting anyway. So there was concern about open meeting law. There was also considerable discussion about the idea that these conversations are taking place anyway. Town leaders need to have these conversations with Pam and Abby in particular directly. They're going to take place anyway. And the reason this group formed was so that everybody would have all the same information in terms of, you know, what's going on in towns, what's going on for the districts so that they could have full understanding of the town's part, part of this. As the budget is being formed and the majority of the group felt strongly that the recent changes that were already put in place, the doing the the summary, first of all, and also adding those all-boards meetings where we do all get together and hash out whatever we need to hash out or hear each other's thoughts, that those were significant enough changes. And so the request back is basically to consider sitting with it for a couple of rounds of that. So we're gonna have, you know, collaboration meeting summaries come out for each meeting. We have the first all-boards meeting in September. Then, as we'll go through, we'll have another one in, I think, January. So get through to that point and see if these changes that have been put in place meet our needs. So that was the response to that. But the the idea of the silent observer format was not acceptable to the group. So.
We need to vote on that now?
I don't know that we do. I think it's at this point, and Anna, you can, you can jump in here too. I think it's up to us to decide. I mean, these conversations are taking place. We don't, it's not our meeting. We have, we can participate or we can choose not to participate.
I, I think if we vote, what are we voting to? I think if we vote, we'll be voting to all or nothing. But at this point, it's gonna happen regardless of how we vote.
Well, the really, the only question is, do we as a committee choose to send representation to this meeting that is taking place, that needs to take place?
Yeah, I, I just meant, because last time we met, we had voted on whether to allow, so now do we have to go, you know, I guess revise that vote? That's, that's what I meant by that. So.
That was just for me to know what response to send.
Yeah.
Like, were we all in agreement of that? So really, right now, the conversation doesn't have to be a formal vote necessarily, and we're still missing two people right now. So maybe we circle back to it. But it's just, do we?
I would say that's.
We wish, yeah, the, the thought to be thinking on is, do we wish to participate in this meeting of conversations that need to take place? We as a committee, it's not our meeting to to start or stop happening. We made the request for a change of format. Majority of the group has said, no, thank you. And so we can choose whether we continue to send representation with these changes, which I think is a reasonable start, but.
Another option is we have two people right now on school committee. We can rotate or we could. I think there were discussion at some point if we should have three that's still not on the quorum. So I think it would decided that maybe that's too many.
I think the problem there was having equal representation between the two towns.
It doesn't have to be.
I would argue it does.
Can you clarify for me? This is the first time I've heard us actually say it's not our meeting.
Yeah.
Whose meeting is it?
This is what I'm learning too. This is really your meeting is, is the sentiment that we, that's the question, isn't it?
What it would. I would share what I know, which is it started as a chairs meeting to open lines of communication to avoid surprises back at a time. I would say 09, 10 budget year and prior, the district had a habit of coming up to tentative budget with 10% plus increases and blindsiding the towns. So when Tony Deet was chair of the school committee and I came on board, he started meeting informally with the other chairs. And we said, well, why don't we make this a standing meeting, meet a few times a year and just get everybody talking? And that's the genesis of it. So whether it was a chairs meeting or our meeting, I think the intent of the meeting was to open up lines of communication to share, converse, just informally share, this is what's happening at this town level. This is what's happening at the board level. This is what we're seeing on the horizon. So when we were going into tentative budget, everyone had a sense of where we were coming from. So it was really just collaboration. And then other issues were coming up that had implications for all of the entities and they, that seemed to be a good place to just share sentiment and conversation that was happening in all of the other boards. So who, whose meeting it actually is, if they're comfortable saying that it's kind of a, a meeting for the school to keep everybody in the loop and to be kept in the loop as to what's going on down. I'm fine with that. But we have been the beneficiary of it for the most part.
You have something. You look like you're gonna say something.
I mean, I, I think my concern is that it's the way it was written up and the way that we talk about it sometimes is it sounds deliberative. And I still worry that we are, we have created a new public group that itself may be subject to open meeting law. Unless we can somehow figure out and show the public that it is informational only and not deliberative and not driving decisions of these other boards. And I don't know how to do that. You know, I don't know what, I don't know if we need a lawyer review or what, but I'd like to settle that. Because I think the closed nature of this makes it difficult for people to judge. What's that?
You're talking about the district agreement. He was talking about the.
Collaboration.
Generally.
Yeah.
I think it's fair to say that was discussed.
It was discussed.
To a great extent, and both town administrators didn't feel like at the way we're constructed now that it's considered a public meeting. It's the the chairs, the chairs are the designated representatives of the body. So when you have the chairs coming together to just have a conversation about what the body is up to in terms of reporting out, I don't think that stretches into the public meeting domain. And that was, I think, the consensus at the table. But I'm not an expert, so we could actually, we could have somebody look at it for us. I think it feels, I don't think that group drives the decision of the board. I think it's more of a managerial group, which is if you kind of listen to some of the conversation around the table where, you know, we'll meet with the town, like I'll meet with Greg and Brendan and have phone conversations with them on numbers of different topics along the way. And if what they're reporting out from those meetings then has an influence or an impact on a board decision, that's not necessarily deliberative. It's just the information flow. So I think it, you know, it's the admins and their chairs kind of getting together to kind of give updates. But if you want to review, that's.
Well, and, and I want to be clear for our committee too. I was the only one who actually reported anything other, well, anything at all at the, at the meeting. There was no report back from any of the other chairs except that that they received the, the information and had talked about Brendan, Brendan and Ruth said that Essex had talked about it. So we're the only ones that have reported a concern at this time, but I don't know how far they got in deliberation with their own boards on that. So maybe this is something that we could table until after. I mean, our next meeting is the all-boards meeting. We do have one, our next, we have one collaboration group meeting scheduled before that though, in order to be prepared for that all-boards meeting. So maybe we could discuss this after that.
And not seeing the notes, it's hard to.
I know.
It, that may make it clear that it's informational only.
Yeah, I know.
But.
And you know, that's where I, I'm trying to follow process too, and this is, this is new. The process we had decided on was that it would go out. I sent him out last Thursday, which is right before a long weekend, you know, and so.
Then are you gonna be writing them up all the time? Are you all rotating through?
Don't know.
And just if I, I'm all about transparency, you know. So being in the collaboration last year and this year, the slight changes, I personally am okay with just to see how things go with the minutes and also the whole board, like whatever we call them, the big meeting happens every three months. I do think it's already one step forward. It's better. And then if we at any point, a few months down the road, we feel like it's not good enough. There's some information still miscommunicated. We can always raise a game.
I would say, and there's, there is a different feel in the meetings. It, it doesn't feel like we're it feels like we're doing meaningful work and that all viewpoints are being included at this point. So it is different. But yeah, once I hear back, I will send this to everyone. You could send me your input. We can send it, but we can do the, the whole process and everything. But I'm just waiting for everyone to hear back from everyone on that.
So we're not ready to report out other things over this.
I would.
I mean, yeah, so the first discussion topic was district updates. That's the thing is that I would like to send this out. I don't want to have to read this. That's the whole point. I don't want to have to read this out for the whole group, but we, we discussed district updates from the town leaders. Pam gave an update of all stuff we're gonna talk about tonight. The E S statement of intent, turf field replacement, and the fiscal 25 outlook. We discussed the committee responses to the previous meeting's summary, which we just discussed again with the action requested that we sit with it for a little bit. And then we discussed fiscal year 25 and beyond, which again, we are going to discuss tonight, right? That's on here is fiscal year 25 overview. So I mean, how much more in time do we want to?
Yeah, it's all just public knowledge.
Yeah.
Well.
Unless there's something more.
So anything we can report out that would be helpful to understand the purpose and intent of the 19th meeting and how to be prepared going into that might be helpful.
See. All right. Discussion topic three, format and agenda for the first all-boards meeting. Through the course of the meeting, we discussed the purpose and format. Key points were defining the purpose, defining the person format and scheduling it as soon as possible. Majority of the group felt it was important to get it in as early as possible. So everyone's perspectives are heard by all the representative groups before before district and member towns start developing their fiscal year 25 budgets. So the proposal there is that we take the first meeting on September 19th from 7:00 to 9:00 P M. The, that closed two-hour limit was, was pretty clear on that and that we, we can still start at 6:00. That Pam will be setting the agenda and the collaboration group will discuss the format and the norms for that. So how we're actually gonna do it with 30 people in a room and six to two hours and still be making sure everyone gets to hear their it gets to have their points heard. Yeah. So we're meeting on September 12th to do that. So if anyone has input on that, send it to me and to Anna so that we can have that input represented on the 12th. It was strongly felt that the agenda needs to be clear and that the format and the meeting norms need to be decided upon and distributed in advance. So everyone knows what to expect so that we're not sitting there, you know, till 12 o'clock at night basically. And to balance that, you know, making sure everyone's heard with efficiency. If there are any additional topics, including talking about establishing some norms of communication between the groups so that we're all on the same page about how that works. If there's time, we can definitely consider those as well. So if you have additional topics, feel free to send them to me and to Anna to bring up on the 12. And the requested action is just to discuss and be prepared for that.
When you were discussing this, do you think all 30 people would actually go?
I do, yeah. I think people are ready for this. I think people would want this. I don't.
Okay.
Yeah. I think as many as can. I mean, it's however many people you can get.
Okay.
And I think it's important coming out of last year, what we were, you know, dealing with, that we make sure that all the boards, when you have one or two people in a room representing, if you don't know, especially with the closed nature of it, like we're talking about here, even with the, the, you know, meeting summaries, if you don't know what's being said, you don't know if your perspective is being shared, if you didn't vote on it by, you know, the will of a full committee kind of thing. And so I think it's important that everyone has a chance to make sure that it's all out in the open. Any other thoughts on that? There's no action required right now. We're gonna sit on it for the next one.
That nine, 12 meeting you referenced, is that another collaboration meeting?
Yeah, that's the collaboration meeting to figure out the format that we're gonna do this in. And then that'll, we'll email that out so everyone knows what to expect. And we can talk about it at our meeting on the 16th before at 6:00, excuse me, the 19th.
We'd have to post the agenda by Thursday, Friday morning latest. So.
So it'll all be out.
We'll be able to draft something. I think I got tasked with it because we did one of these several years ago and I'm gonna go back through the folders and find the agenda setup and see how we structured it and use that as a jumping off.
Any other questions or thoughts about that for now, for Erica and Paige just coming in? I didn't send this out in advance because I don't have sign-off from everybody who was in attendance yet from the last collaboration meeting, but we catch you up after. But basically, we're just gonna have holes for now on everything. Get through that first all-boards meeting and then see where. Thank you. Okay. All right.
I guess there's one more question. Is there precedent in other regional districts for doing this type of stuff? Or did you talk to some of your peers?
Yeah, Hamilton, London does it. I've talked to the chairperson there and I'll talk to her again before, I mean, before our next collaboration meeting. They started it, I think, two years ago. And it's a, a lot of people. And but it is, it's been valuable enough that they've kept doing it.
I think the smaller regionals are more likely to do it than the three, four, five hundred.
Makes sense, yeah.
Okay. That's it for that. We haven't met as a finance subcommittee. That's just, I, I also, I think that we don't have to answer it right now, but knowing that this is like the chairs meeting, but we have the report out in finance subcommittee and it works out right now that Anna and I are the chair and vice chair. But I think we should maybe down the line clarify how we want to handle that. Do we want it to be the chairperson? If the chairperson doesn't happen to be on the finance subcommittee, how do we wish to handle that moving forward?
We've always had an Essex and Manchester rep.
Yeah.
Just to keep it even. So even though it was the chairs meeting, it was one to equal to come along.
Yeah.
We're gonna discuss this later when we do the subcommittee.
We can. All right, policy subcommittee. It does not say report.
Did not read that.
Negotiation as a report. Chris and Kate?
We have not met, but we are getting ready to negotiate a unit B contract.
Hopefully soon, whenever we can find 45 minutes where everybody needs to come.
I saw some email about that today. I don't know if we're any. We landed on the 26th, I believe, for the initial meeting to get organized, which I believe is a Thursday, and I think will end up being the target date, just knowing the schedule and the constraints. There we go, or constraints rather.
The 26th is a two, so.
My guess is it will be Thursdays going forward.
So I have a question about that one and maybe you have an answer and maybe you don't. So for the rest of the committee, what, what can we do? Do, are there any resources, anything we can learn more to be understanding? Or should we be looking at other towns that have done this, that sort of thing? What can we do so that we understand what's happening as you guys are representing us?
I guess that we haven't even discussed whether we are still doing silent observers. I would assume that we are because it seemed to work out pretty well during our last negotiation. But anybody is welcome. We're in the past, everyone, all of the committee members and unit members have been welcome to, so they have a better understanding of sort of the topics that are being discussed. Because beyond that, it's difficult for us to talk about negotiations that are ongoing.
Do you, I, I think with our last one, we had some sort of direction from the school committee to you all as our representatives. Do we have or need that for this process?
No, we haven't. We're not even there yet.
Oh. All right. So this first meeting is just setting schedules, okay?
Not, yeah, and I, what I can share is that we don't currently have a TA contract, so this will be the first ever. So we don't even have something to review or areas where we would make recommendations for changes or updates. So I think the first meeting is going to be, how are we gonna come up with a base document? And I'm assuming a good amount of the work on this is gonna fall toward Anthony and Holby to bring us some exemplars from their, each of their perspectives to see where they're starting off, you know, or starting off point could be and then look to go from there. So I think this will be language heavy. I, I don't think the financials, for those who may not be aware, their financials, TA financials follow exactly the teacher financials in terms of cost of living, healthcare package splits, et cetera. So all of those major pieces are fresh and new out of this last contract. So I don't know that we would deviate or need to deviate too drastically. I think the ongoing discussion statewide out of para TA negotiations is living wage. So that may bring some points of discussion. Knowing their motivation is some years ago now, but their motivation to seek representation for me to was around working conditions.
Okay.
And more so just to memorialize some working conditions. So I think that's gonna be a big part of our discussion. And Allison Collins will be on the committee because she, we don't have many general TAs at all, just a couple of, a few kindergarten TAs and a couple of general TAs throughout the district, but the majority of our teaching assistants are special education. So she will be there as the advisor. I think Kate summarized, we, we don't even know what we don't know yet.
Go ahead, Karen. It's my just, for consideration of our reps, as we look at the TA contract. Been coming, following up on, you know, because we obviously have to make this past year. Some feedback that I have heard is that if we are going to proceed down the road of contracts, we should consider a review process within those contracts. In terms of there's going to be an, an landing contract that we consider how. Yeah, I guess I can't think of a better way to say it. And, and I need this to you guys, but I think that's the feedback that I've heard.
Can you clarify?
What do you mean?
I really.
So for instance, if if we find ourselves in a position of, of making tests, who is reviewing the PAs? Who gives feedback to the TA?
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay. Like an evaluation.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not speaking educator speak. I'm sorry. Yes, that's lawyer speak. We have reviews. You have, what, what do they call?
Evaluation.
Evaluations, yes. So maybe having that be a more formal part of the process or maybe not, but at least considering whether it has.
Do they currently not have them?
We do annual reviews of all teaching assistants and they're done either by the principal with contribution to the teacher with whom they work or by the director of special education in conjunction with the teacher that's in day. Currently now we do, all TAs are at will. Not to put down this, we could put this on a future agenda and are subject to annual evaluation and retention is based on the needs of the program, reorganization and performance each year. So that's something I think we would be looking to preserve within the contract, but we can discuss that for. So that's something I think we would be looking to preserve within the contract, but we can discuss that further.
All right. We're a quiet group today. Closing subcommittee reports, superintendent's report.
A couple of things, and I have a couple of handouts for the pieces, but I don't think I need to project. Obviously, we just launched the school year and you've gotten my notes and we've got a newsletter coming out toward the end of the week, but it's been a great, really upbeat. I think we're low key tonight, but it's been a really upbeat start to the school year, very smooth transition. Three new leadership positions. Sometimes, you know, we, we did a little extra preparation to make sure everybody was well equipped and up to speed on expectations and beginning of the year issues and protocols. And I think it just went fantastic. I know Teresa came to the opening meeting. Spirit seemed very high among the staff to be returning. I was joking ahead of the meeting, one of my biggest points of pain was the loss of the fifty student parking spots and what the ripple effect that that would be in the neighborhood and whether or not we'd be, you know, parking in front of people's driveways, as we have in the past. But Joanne and Julie teamed up and they really got the message out early and it, it went very smoothly. Um, and I think Maria's right with the rain, it kind of tamped things down. So the traditional chalking of the parking lot, they had already run a prevent on that and that was gonna be moved out, but couldn't have happened anyway with the rain. So I think everything went swimmingly and people cooperated. I know we had one small accident or car trouble on the second day that kind of backed up some traffic, but other than that, all things went well. Um, at the beginning of the year, they always published the Boston Magazine Best Of and US News and World Report has moved from a spring to a fall reporting. I think we fared well in both of those. I just, I'm sharing and people feel, have a lot of different feelings about rankings. If you heard me say this over the years, they're one point of interest. They're not our only way of measuring our success. But I think they're worth noting because they are important to some, and we do get questions about them. Um, and it's come up even in these meetings over the past year or so, but we came in second in, um, Boston Magazine this year. Um, I think it's our highest yet. And US News, we're still hanging in there in the top five percent. They rank twenty-five thousand schools. We're at seven fifty-six nationally, twenty-eight in Massachusetts. Some of the discrepancy between the lists of different, differing methodologies. We don't spend a lot of time on it. We haven't really dug in. As I shared in a quick note to you, some of the key differences, Boston Magazine pulled out charter schools this year, which tightened the list a little bit. It, US News and World Report includes exam schools and charter schools, but they, and they also have some calculations in there for assisting or, or student growth among underserved populations with, in our numbers and underserved populations are fairly small. So I don't know that we're getting a lot of, of points in that area. Notably, in the US News and World Report, we did rank very high on breadth of curriculum. Which kind of ties into our ongoing conversation and ties back to the Boston Magazine, um, subchart on enrollment, which is, we're getting good points on breadth of curriculum because we are offering a lot of options. It's not doing us any favors in our student teacher ratio, which is small on the Boston Magazine chart. They did a ranking of the top ten or twenty schools for, for class size. We are being recognized for having small class size, but I would ask you to take a look at the list and look at who else is on that list. Namely Rockport and Georgetown, who are schools that are smaller than us and are ranking higher for having smaller class size. So you're seeing the relationship there between the overall size of the, of the school, what you're trying to offer and the impact that it's having on your class size averages. So that's something we can talk about more in another day. But, you know, caps off to the high school, but we always stop to say that any achievement of the high school is really a K-12 production. And it's the work of all of the districts together, trying to work as coherently as possible to produce the outcome. So we were, you know, we're thrilled with that. It's great news for Julie coming in and I'm sure she'll be sharing that. It'll get shared more widely as we go on in the week ahead. Uh, opening meeting with the teachers, opening, uh, just so you know, we meet with all teachers who are new to the district the week prior to the start of school. They come in and they do an induction program. It was tiny this year. We only had four to five actual classroom teachers. If you remember last year, we lost a lot of positions. Um, so the only thing we did hire, um, we have, let's see, sixteen new staff members, seven teachers, three leadership positions and six teaching assistants. But those are all resignations or retirements. And we did have a couple of late summer, um, unanticipated retirements that we needed to fill for. But those aren't any expansion positions or any new positions. And in fact, last year, we lost a total of, um, six point six teaching positions when all of our budget variations were set and done, which puts that fifteen and a half positions from fiscal nineteen. So we have new faces and we have replaced teachers in critical areas or in areas that we could not reschedule at this point. But, um, we're still down teaching positions from FY nineteen. The good luck has been most of those reductions have been able to be dealt with through people moving on and not having directly cut people. So, uh, getting the year up to speed, uh, the teacher day is the new staff orientation. That's where we take them through set of expectations, what it's like to work in the district, helping them answer questions and just start to get them acclimated to the curriculum instruction program. Heather Leonard, our new director of curriculum instruction and technology is the lead on that. It's the prep up to their mentoring program and we're required to offer a formal mentoring program to all of our new staff. That's done at, with Heather as the lead and, um, our middle school, uh, Earl Program Teacher, Carrie Shaw is also our teacher designated mentor leader. So they work together and will continue to work with our new staff over the course of the year to make sure that they have the guidance and support that they need. They are all each assigned, um, a teacher mentor as well. We have a series of school department and grade level meetings over those days, just as kind of business meetings to get the year up and running. People are given time to prepare their classrooms. And on the second day, for teachers, we do our all district gathering, which we held again at the Memorial School this year. It's a very bright, open and climate controlled environment. Maria was, Maria and Amy tag teamed to really pull the whole thing together. We tried something a little different this year. We went with a, a round table setting with assigned seating, kind of like you're coming into a wedding, to get people to socialize across school, maybe meet somebody new. And use it as an illustration of the work that we're trying to do, which is try to break down the silos within the district and create coherence and vertical alignment. And also begin to know each other and know each other's work so that it can be better informed or decisions with students. There's also a great, one of the students that was there to help us with the recognition of service award said, well, now they know how we feel when we get assigned a group. So we also made a point of saying this is a great example of how kids might feel when this isn't the table that they want to sit at or the group that they want to be in. But I think people really enjoyed it after their initial shock. We did a wonderful job of conveying sentiment and support of the school committee. I think that was very well received. And it was really kind of a quick, into the point meeting. Uh, it's a little bit of a pep rally with, um, the goal of setting expectations and the focus for the year, which is our strategic initiatives. I will send around, um, the overview look of that. Um, and then we spent some time on recognition of service. And I had put in my notes that I wanted to just explain what that was for people who are new. Few years back, we just started a process of recognizing people for their continued service to the district. We have people who have been here fifteen, twenty, um, in twenty-five years. No one at thirty years this year, but we have had some of those in the past. We symbolize the, um, you're probably tired of hearing this now, but the awards are symbolized by this poem, um, or story of the starfish. And it's the story of a little boy walking the beach after a storm, um, relentlessly throwing starfish into the ocean, kind of a grouchy adult comes by and tells the young man, he's wasting his time, that he can't do anything to save them. Uh, so the boy takes another starfish, he throws it in the water and he says, well, I just saved that one. We just, it's an illustration, we think of the work that teachers do, which is sometimes feels like you're just rowing against the tide, that you're not always being recognized for the good work that you do. And even in our own day to day work, we don't always get to see the tangible results of the impact that we're making. And sometimes it takes them to get to the high school and for there to be, to see them cross the stage at graduation or to get, um, an academic award or just make it through because it's been a struggle. So sometimes teachers do suffer in silence and aren't always recognized for the work they do. So this is just our small way trying to acknowledge that. And we had a couple of, uh, wonderful seventh grade students come and they delivered the awards, uh, to each of the recipients. But very quickly, just wanted to share with you, and I would love you guys to consider having them here to give them your recognition. But for fifteen, uh, fifteen years of service this year, we have Carolyn Hood, who is the administrative assistant at the middle school. Melissa Ulrich is our twenty year of service. Reckon, Recky, uh, award winner. And she got the red apple. Uh, we have apples for each of the years. So you start with a starfish. When you get to the twenty year mark, you get a red apple. When you get to, I'm sorry, you get twenty years red, twenty-five is crystal, and then thirty is the golden apple. And we have not yet had to figure out the thirty-five year. But that will be a chore. I don't see anyone on horizon, but Melissa Ulrich has been with us for twenty years of service. And then for twenty-five years is Robbie Billsbury, Michelle Magania, Joanne Seaman, Alison Turpil and Claudette Yuckins. So, um, they are fantastic educators who have given most of, not all of their careers to the district. And we recognize Caroline, uh, Carolyn is administrative assistant, but we recognize everyone in the district. And we typically make a point of saying that no matter what your role is, you're contributing to the core function, which is to support all of our students. Um, so, you know, just if you see them, please acknowledge them. Other than that, I have two just general beginning of the year updates that are a little bit more, um, technical. We have, I'll start with the district improvement plan focus areas, and I'm not gonna roll through them. So what I did was over the summer, I gave to you the end of year district improvement plan report, which showed you where we were on all of our deliverables for last year. What this does is it goes through the, the, um, district improvement plan and distills down and highlights only the, the deliverables for this year. So this is our focus for the year. These are the, um, goals that we'll be working toward. And we'll be updating you periodically as we go on through the year, unless there's specific questions about them, which we can do in a minute. There's not much more we need to do with that tonight, except to know that we're off and running. If you get to talk a little bit about goals tonight, that will help inform me, but it'll be this. And then what I know is on our plate for the year ahead, and I'll bring you some rough goals of mine on the nineteenth in our little brief meeting. The other piece I have for you is part of the beginning of the year update, and we've moved this up and we've stamped this. Probably could have made it bigger and put it in red, but this is an unofficial, unofficial preliminary enrollment report. Meaning it's going to change by the end of the week. But to give you a snapshot of where we are, we went ahead and did this. This isn't the class breakdown one. This is just the big picture. They're all the same. Yeah. Big picture by grade level, by category and in total where we are for enrollment to start the year. What I'll point out here is obviously we have a, we had a larger exiting. We had one of the, it was like a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-three students in the senior class, so one of the last large classes to come through. And we're not quite replacing it all. So our total enrollment right now as of today is at twelve, twelve for next year. We'll continue to map it. We'll bring you that enrollment chart that shows you how it breaks out by grade level, by classroom at the elementary school, uh, probably at our next meeting. But two things we know everybody's tracking and keeping an eye on, the impact to enrollment for the towns of Manchester and Essex and how it's splitting out for kids, uh, for, by kid per town. And it shows you, you have a little snapshot in the bottom right hand corner that shows you that Essex is actually slightly decreasing in total enrollment next year as part of the district. So they're down point seven, Manchester is up point seven. And this just gives you the breakout by grade level, by school, by town. Who's choice, who's resident and what impact the, um, out of district placements have on the total enrollment. The other thing we ran a very early, um, snapshot of was building off the work we did last year on the private school move outs. Again, this is, they'll start to survey this in the middle of the year, so we'll have official numbers by the end of the year. But what we can see right now is that we only lost only ten students moved between eighth and ninth grade. Um, and it breaks down primarily Essex Tech with, uh, two students to private school and, um, one student to another public school. I'm sorry, five students. From Manchester out, four from Essex and one choice student out. I'll be, I know you worked with these numbers a little bit closer.
So basically every time a student leaves the district, we're required to report to the department about what happened to them. And so, uh, the most common types of transition is transition to a private school, transition to a public school. Uh, and Essex Tech obviously is one of the more common public school destinations for our ninth graders. And these numbers are all smaller than last year, but, um, this is separate from the, so those are our kids, where did they go if they left? Separate from that is the analysis we did last year, as Pam was saying, where we do call outs for essentially opt-in information to private schools in the area to say, do you have any residents? And that's never really been part of this data, but we started to track that and we'll, we'll do that again, as Pam mentioned.
So too early to do too much with this other than to start to monitor, but I know the concern last year is that we were losing lots of kids out. It looks a little bit better this year, so.
This is great. I know that it is early and, and unofficial and preliminary and all of those things, but this is really nice to have starting the school with. So thank you. Thank you.
It's going.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to. All are, we're understanding it will change, but it's nice to have a snapshot right now. So thank you. Anything else before we? Well, I will start comments and questions by saying, so you're always very good at making sure you point out that the, the, um, the rankings and things, you know, for the high school are a result of the feeder system through the elementaries and every, and, and the middle school, of course, and that our teachers are doing excellent work. And so I will just take a moment to say thank you to you and the administration team, um, but you at the helm for your leadership doing this. I mean, it includes reductions since two thousand nineteen of fifteen and a half positions. Appropriately, we're right sizing for a decline in enrollment. Um, and that doesn't make it easy, but we're still seeing long careers being recognized here. And, um, I think in the grand scheme of things, well, we're all eyeball deep in it. We're trying to get the budget stuff worked out and stuff. It's a really nice reminder that, we have a really great school district with really great teachers and really great people at the helm. So thank you for all your work that went into bringing those things forward. Does anyone have questions or comments for Pam's report? Yeah.
Um, I just have one question about the document you just handed out. What, can you just remind me, because I'm sure somebody has told me before, but the special ed tuition out for post graduates, how long is our obligation?
Hold it twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
And any other questions or comments?
Is it, was there, um, any budget impact of the summer retirements that we had not anticipated?
No, it's neutral, neutral.
In the last minute, I know we have one, one last minute teacher back, also neutral.
Yeah, so I don't know if we followed the postings. We didn't think she was going to return. We posted, didn't have any luck. We organized the posting, didn't have any luck. They were consolidating schedules and looking at how to make it work when we heard from her. So it's budget neutral and upside is all on kids and schedules. Yep. Any other questions or? It's twenty-two. That's my word is twenty-two, five years.
All right. Well, thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
All right. In continued business, we have three main bullet points here, and I, I think I'd like to know how we feel about ordering them. So we have our continued work, which is us getting to the business of figuring out how we're gonna organize ourselves and move forward. And I think that's probably the bulk of the conversation. So I'm So I'm wondering if maybe we want to consider the turf field replacement and the twenty three closeout, twenty four startup before that. Do, do you see any reason not to do that?
Totally up to you guys.
What do you think? And then we can be working through this until we decide we're done. Okay, let's do that then.
Sure. So for field replacement, I guess a couple of things. You saw that we approved our first two sets of invoices. Which typically would come sooner to you, but as you know, we had quite a bit of delays with the testing for P best, which all came out clear, which is great. But the protocols that we talked about previously were fairly technical in ways that were new to the contractor because our requirements were a little more advanced, asking to sample the specific items as they come on their way here. Certainly makes sense why people would want that. But that required a special protocol around handling the sample. So with that said, you've probably seen outside the window that the turf is looking really good and the, there's a meeting onsite tomorrow to go through final sign off, if that is possible. So that would also include an onsite G max testing, which is one of the final steps to make sure that it can be cleared. Like so we're essentially twenty four to forty eight hours away, provided there aren't any surprises. And so, you know, we've had several, but so far so good. And so that's good news. And from there, the next step would be in theory to begin Brook Street right away. There are steps that just like this field that have to happen first. The final PFAS information has to be in there. I think one or two pieces still have not come back. We're expecting him literally any day. And we saw last time that any day sometimes stretched, you know, a couple of extra days than we thought. So the good news is, you know, hopefully we won't be taking Brook Street apart. And so we could have two turf fields. Alternatively, we could make the decision. I think Concom has already said that we could at our own risk open up field number two, which we would do once Highland was open and be much like where we are today. So things are really moving forward as of now. Brook Street is still on track to hit the nine thirty deadline. That was the original deadline. There was originally a lot of cushion in that schedule. It all got eaten up by the fact that we're starting later. And I think it's certainly possible that there could be a schedule revision from that nine thirty deadline. I, no one's told me that or given me any indication of that, but that's just what I'm thinking as I look at it, but TV did. So we should know more about that. Once we get the final results in, well, that'll give us the clear start date and then we'll map from there. So I think that that's certainly good news on Highland. We're thankful for everyone's patience. I know it was very frustrating how it started, but we are seeing the positive impacts of what is a very experienced career, which is that they do a lot of these fields. They know how to do them. So once we got through that process, we really haven't had issues from Gail's perspective with the work that's being done, which is really nice to say. Of course, Gail will be signing off on the final product. That's part of their job and part of what we're paying for. So certainly they're going to make sure all the specifications are met. But so far they've been doing that phase by phase and it goes through things like plenary and various aspects of each of the stages of the work and it's all coming across pretty well. So that's the operational update. Financially, you saw two invoices. And it'll kind of tie into what we're talking about with the budget update, but we have spent through the stabilization money kind of as we expected to do. And so that's happening. And so the second voucher for turf for the second month, which is July has started to spend now out of school choice reserves. And I know that there's discussion about whether a town reimbursement strategy will or won't will or won't move forward. It sounds like that might be heading in a more positive direction. That's really up to the towns to tell us, but until such time, we're spending the reserves, which is my understanding of what school committee voted at the end of June, to just move forward. So we have in our update, some projections that consider it both ways, kind of like we've been doing. Yes.
I think at some point or a few months ago, you mentioned that the cost eight hundred K each is actually, it has a little buffer. Do you not have a better idea of how much is going to come?
Well, I'm really excited to say that the change orders with the first field have been very negligible, almost, almost nothing. So I would say that that could yield some savings for sure. I think we saw that there was two hundred and maybe two hundred thousand plus of, of potential change order cushion. So that could certainly bring those numbers down. We're not through the second field yet. Who knows what will happen. And we have to, I just, one other thing that's going to come up, just so you know, is that there's a very small additional order of equipment that we pulled out of the bid for maintenance equipment that was originally in the bid specs, but Gail said, there's really no point paying a contractor to buy this through their contract. You can just do it yourself and it's on state contract. So that's going to be a separate purchase order. That's, you know, I, I want to say five to fifteen thousand dollars. I forget the exact number, small. So bottom line, yes, there shouldn't, as of now, we're tracking for sure for savings. But how much, I think it's too early to say.
One comment, one question. As a person who was very frustrated by the delay in the fields, I, I want to say how impressed I've been by the level of commitment out there from our contractors. I mean, they, they were there, I think, every day of Labor Day weekend. And I noticed, but more importantly, I know our community noticed and cared and was, you know, felt really good about it. So I want to say thank you for you know, steering that ahead. And then my question was simply in terms of the PFAS testing for Brook Street. Isn't it the exact same carpet and?
Same model, same substances, same specifications and conservation commission. It was quite clear. It needs to be samples from the exact material that's going to be put in right in that place because they have they, we would be, have both fields done by now if it were going with that very reasonable logic. Because they have the exact materials even before, you know, we had to have them. So we went through the manufacturing line. Essentially.
But the, the answer, if, if asked about that is, is very simple that our Concom is.
That's correct.
I have a question. I brought it up briefly to Pam. So for, for anyone who's concerned about weekend work, noise, hours thing. So if you could speak to what you know about anyone that's had concerns or complaints and.
Would like to, I was going to jump in and acknowledge that the people in the neighborhood have had to, while we're excited about, yeah. The round the clock work, it's been, not been easy for everyone in the neighborhood. Avi can speak to the complaints that he's been managing, but we anticipate that it will revisit that, the Brook Street, because we know the history from Memorial School and they're going to want to push for their deadline. And while as many people are as excited, for as many people that are excited about it, there's some that is going to cause a disruption. So we appreciate them bearing with us throughout.
Yeah. And in case you get questions, the short update on that is there is a noise ordinance in town, which we have applied to this work in terms of our expectations with the contractor, which is that heavy equipment, noise producing work. This is all in the update that I published to the website. Should only be happening Monday through Saturday. I believe it's eight to six PM. We've certainly passed that on to the contractor. And for other work, we try to use our typical turf field availability hours, just like what you do when kids are on the field. And that's nineteen, nineteen nine. So there have been two, at, at least two incidences of one a week ago, and then one again over holiday weekend. Holiday weekend was supposed to be a shutdown time. We clearly communicated that to the contractor and to Gail. And the contractor was not working on either of these two issues that we heard about from neighbors. But in both cases, a delivery was brought here to the contractor from manufacturing facility. And in both cases, they, you know, brought it when they had it and said, you know, one case they were running late and said, we're going to come anyway. And by the time we were able to find out what was happening, it was kind of the deed was done. We have told community members who've asked that what our communication expectations are, we've also encouraged them to after hours to let the police know we're not reachable because the police know, we've talked to the Manchester police about what those expectations are. They certainly know the ordinances and they can come check things out. And then if need be paint to Jason, it can paint to, you know, boom, boom, boom. But the steps to happen, I think everyone would be happier to know that the police can get here quickly. So we've encouraged people to do that. And it's just another good example of close working partnership with them for after hours work on security. So we do want to thank the Manchester police department for being very helpful in that regard. And also acknowledge the, the, the serious frustration to folks who have a very reasonable expectation that this work should not be happening after hours. We agree. And it, it's, it's not something we're happy about or regret. So I'm sorry about that.
Yeah. The chief has been looked into all of our communications and our handling of the complaints with the parking. So he's aware of what's going on.
And that was a good point that you made that with Brook Street, you have a recent history with Memorial. So you know what to expect around there and the neighbors know what to expect. And you know where, where pressure points are with that. So that's helpful.
And what we'll try to do along with Memorial, if we know there's a need for them to be working outside of the greater fun times, we'll try to communicate that head to head. We, we still have those neighbors. So we should be in good shape.
Well, thank you to you. And please extend our thanks to Jason. Yeah, he's been really doing a great, great job. And
the fun thing of, he will talk to anybody, get any bit of information. So whenever we're like looking for, you know, more stuff, he, he talks to the crews. He's watching the crews. He's out there, even though it's not, it's been a part of sprint turf and Gail's jobs. He's kind of doing everything he can to be right on top of what's happening. He's done an amazing job.
I want to acknowledge Kami too, who has been working behind the scenes to make sure kids and families aren't disrupted and that everything got started off on time and everyone had a place to be into practice. And she's just taken it in stride. And I think in speaking with her and Cheryl, I think everyone agrees that the disruption is worth the outcome. So they've been kind of teeming as best they can to get this done. So just a shout out to her for the good work that's been going on.
She really minimized the impact to a lot of the teams by just being aware, in the loop and doing the juggling.
Awesome. Thank you. Do you want to budget update next?
Yes.
So this is just following the format that we used last year around this time, which is kind of, we're getting ready for, you know, a closeout of the fiscal year with the auditor's visit. And certainly trying to accelerate our state reporting for both end of year financial report as well as excess and deficiency certification. You know, th- those things are typically done by the end of September. Our district has not always been as quick to file those reports as we would like, in truth, just due to what I would just say is insufficient capacity in the business office. You know, it's come up in the management letter. Many times I've been so thrilled with the kind of benefits of the restructuring process as long, as well as just a multi-year process of kind of building in infrastructure. So that's really paying dividends. We're kind of ahead of schedule right now, but it's going to be a very big push between now and the end of September. So just following through, you know, we'll start with revenue, then expense. Revenue, the, the biggest change on what we were seeing is primarily interest income. Not something we typically report out as a change. And I think everyone remembers the time where people were talking about inflation as well as higher rates. And certainly that happened. I think it was no more apparent than in the construction interest. You may remember, and I have some numbers here that I'm just going to pull up, that the original funding of stabilization came from construction interest. And we had in just three or four months of first borrowing thirty five million, three or four months, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of interest income in fiscal nineteen. A full year after that, we had an additional four hundred and eighty two thousand of interest income. So huge amounts of money. And we've talked about the the fact that the plan, since the borrowing does go through the towns who pay a hundred percent of the debt costs, we work very collaboratively with them on debt structure. And so the agreement was let's borrow upfront, take advantage of the rates at that time. That ended up being certainly a good decision. But the interest income would stay with capital needs by transferring into stabilization once E and D for each of the years was certified. Fiscal twenty one, that four hundred and eighty two thousand went down to twenty one thousand. Fiscal twenty two, ten thousand dollars. So this was really not something we talked about or focused on. The project was kind of wrapped up. We didn't actually transfer that thirty thousand dollars to stabilization. We might want to revisit that now because it's part of what's sitting in E and D. Because E and D builds year over year. But we saw in fiscal twenty three with rates going up a hundred thousand. So still nowhere near the numbers that we saw of the three eighteen and the four eighty two. But that was a surprising, you know, set of developments for me. And with that, I do think it would be advisable for us to kind of go back to that plan and transfer that money into stabilization. It's not something we can do now. The way stabilization works is it has to be part of a budgetary amendment because it has to go through the towns. What we did in the past was follow a process where once E and D was certified, we would then take the portion of that E and D that was the interest income. We would use it to amend the budget by increasing revenues, which were rep funds from Indy and same amount of expense going to stabilization and no change to assessments. When you change your budget, even if they increase, if it doesn't change assessments, you can send it to the towns and if they have no reason to object to it, it will automatically pass within forty five days. They also have opportunity to vote on it if they so desire. So we're not there yet. There's nothing to vote on, but I, I am looking at taking that hundred thousand from this page from fiscal twenty three. And I would recommend we take the ten and twenty small amounts that we kind of let roll the E and D and put them all together. Reason being that the stabilization is spent down. So we're going to get to the, the reserves update in a second, but since that's the biggest revenue surprise or revenue upside, I would say, I just wanted to make sure you kind of knew how that would play out. I think the biggest thing in here that has more of a recurring impact that we can be thinking about for future years is the decline of transportation aid. You may remember when we talked about the budget fiscal twenty four, we said that we are keeping that number flat and we were a little concerned that it would go down. We've talked about how transportation costs have been a positive surprise to budget because of the restructuring and the, the fewer number of routes we're running. That also means we have less reimbursable expense and less revenue. So in all the prior years, we've had an excess to budget. And you may remember that we transferred that to a transportation stabilization fund that you could use to offset future year expense. This is the first year, I think, since fiscal sixteen that we don't have that luxury. This is actually a budget miss. And so the number is about forty thousand below. So that could be maybe a barometer for about what the size of the delta could be for twenty five, since we held the budget flat. So that's something I do think we'll see going forward. When we do the fiscal twenty five budget, we'll probably bring that number down to come in line with what we've been observing. So that's on the revenue side. On the operating expense side, you can see more positive news since the last budget update. Things like, you know, health insurance, we really forecast, there's really no change there. Same thing primarily with staffing, other than any change at the bottom that we had related to leaves. Really, between leaves and substitutes, that's something that is constantly changing through the end of the year. So that's what led to the sixty four thousand dollar variance there. Some of the bigger items, I had talked in one of my prior school committee updates about utilities. We were in a very frustrating back billing issue from National Grid where they kept sending us estimated bills instead of actuals. Not really a whole lot you can do there, but we did have some benefits by the end of the year in terms of the sixty thousand dollar variance. Once we got all those bills in, I'm glad to say they're in now. This will certainly help us close our year. And then we just had some changes on added district. Transport and contracted. Those are things that are constantly changing, especially for the, the transportation routes. As well as contracted services, which are really on an as needed basis for students for related services professionals that we might contract with, audiology services, behavioral services, what have you. So what does that all mean? It means that of the five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we're still going to be dipping into those reserves. We're still on the negative, but not by as much as we were expecting. So it's probably going to be reduced to just under a hundred thousand of need. I think it's important to remember that we have a lot of one-time benefits there. So those are not things that we should expect to recur in terms of interest income. We're seeing that trend down. We had some one-time savings in administration that we talked about in our budget to actuals with some of the interim positions. So great news, we're still in a deficit position and we do expect that deficit just off of these numbers to expand a little bit in the coming year as some of the one-time benefits go away. All right. I'm going to move on to reserves, update for the end of the year as well as a look forward. So this is just preliminary balances. They're not final numbers, but they're pretty close. And school choice, generally we try to keep flat. We try to, you know, we've been saving it for our capital projects. And as I mentioned, in July, we're going to dip into that. We already have through the vouchers that you approved about thirty minutes ago to the tune of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. But essentially it's flat within twenty eight thousand dollars. There's always a little volatility because we charge any added district transportation and tuition costs for school choice students to that fund because they get fully reimbursed in the subsequent year. So there's just a little bit of noise there, but basically not a lot of surprises. We've talked about how stabilization is spent down to zero. Uh, the hundred thousand that I'm referencing here is from this year. We we could actually make that about a hundred and thirty if we take the fiscal twenty two and twenty one um. Money from interest and and put that in as well. E and D um, pretty flat. Um, there should be uh. This really just relates to the numbers that we saw before. The E and D formulation, need to remind you, doesn't just include general fund. It also includes any things that are happening in other funds for deficit situations that need to be covered. And so um, the formula is a little arcane, um, but essentially we're looking at it being pretty flat. Um. Remember, E and D does already include what we've committed for twenty four, even though we haven't spent it yet. The Department of Revenue asks us, have you committed any E and D to a future year budget? And that's got to come out of what gets certified. So we may have savings at the end of twenty four, just like we did. But E and D will still be reduced because they don't want to see you spending money that you've committed until they know for sure that the savings have materialized. So keep in mind that the lowered uh E and D that we committed to twenty four, I think it's like two hundred and seventy thousand dollars if I recall. Um, that's baked into this number here. And then facilities rental, um, not much change there. It's up twelve thousand. I think prior years were up closer to about twenty. We we didn't have quite as much facility rental in the past year that's starting to um tick back up. So where does that leave us? About ten percent of budget right now, but knowing that we have some needs that are pretty significant in twenty four. Um, you know, I would say that's kind of where we tend to want to be in the past. I know there's discussion about whether we still believe we want to be there, whether we want lower reserves or higher reserves. But let's take a look before we uh get too excited about um some of the things that we've been telling the school committee for a while about um capital obligations, et cetera. So um. We still have potentially up to eight hundred and seventy five thousand remaining to fund the turf field as as Anna mentioned. That's assuming we spend the full one point six million. So that number could come down and I hope it will. And as of now, I would say I believe it will, but it's too early to say how much. Um, we also had some placeholders from the capital plan. We had a full capital plan that included an FY twenty four set of numbers. But on a recent conversation when we talked about using the uh reserves to fund the turf field in absence of an agreement from the towns about them contributing. Um, we started to say, let's just focus on the need to do's and put. Things that might be potentially deferrable off until we have a little better visibility on this major one point two million dollar town discussion around turf fields. So these are the items that we, you know, highlighted previously is pretty important that we really intend to move forward with this year. Um, so we have some security enhancements um that we tend to continue to do every year. Um, and we also have some accessibility compliance issues. Those, you may remember the Habib report identified that, you know, uh with Essex Elementary, you're grandfathered in on certain items for accessibility. But if you have a student with a need in your building, you have to service that student regardless of code. And and so these are based on what we think we're going to need to do to service the population that we have. Uh, we talked about the smart board replacement at middle school, high school. It was on the list back when we did the capital plan in May. Um, these items are original to this building. And we did uh put in new devices in Memorial School with that construction project. We put in new devices at Essex Elementary. With equalization through stabilization. And um, I think while we are not looking at units that are quite as interactive for the middle school, high school as of now. Um, it's certainly for, you know, just about every teaching and learning space, it would be a substantial investment and it's important. And uh, at some point, the projectors uh which are kind of a uh non-interactive alternative, those need to be replaced in this building. So we don't really have unlimited time to deal with that. We, I I don't think it would be prudent to just put in brand new projectors when you could use this as an investment, I think would be a lot smarter. So that's why this item is rising, whereas you might think it's something that is a nice to have, I think, um. Between the projectors and just the fact that you have equity of program and how things are done, I think it makes sense. And we have a small placeholder for furniture. That's been trimmed down to the bare minimum. I think that number's too low. Um, I think we should be spending more than that, to be honest. Um, but again, until we have a better visibility to what's going to happen with the big number. That's where it is based on the capital plan. So, you know, right there, you're looking at about um one point two million dollars of needs in the current year. So this is real money. We've been saying for a while, we've got, you know, part of the benefit of having a capital plan is, you know, you have to do something with it. And I would be really, um, I think it would not be in our community's best interest to sit on those plans. So uh, of course, that's stuff that the school committee will have to approve. Um, and you know, if you have comments or feedback, I'd certainly welcome them. Um. You don't have to vote on those items, but you certainly could, you know, give us your indication of support. But these are certainly things that we're going to want to move forward pretty quickly. What what does that do to reserves? Let's get to that punchline, which is the middle bullet here. The one point two million dollars, that would take our reserve balance down to about one point seven heading into fiscal twenty five. About five point six percent of an estimated twenty five budget. The twenty five budget estimate, I just hit it with three and a half percent spending growth rate, very high level number. Okay? Um, so. If we were to put the hundred and thirty from stabilization in, you you'd be um. Closer to one point eight million dollars heading into twenty five, which would be six percent, not a huge difference. If you get full town reimbursement of one point two million from the turf fields, that's a big difference. So then you're talking about three million or ten percent kind of right back where we're at, which is kind of what you would expect. Now, remember, we know their deficits going into twenty five. So how does that impact this picture? Well, right now, we talked about around six hundred and sixty five thousand dollar uh deficit. Assuming that we assess both counts equally at three and a half percent with no changes to apportionment. Um, that would take us down to one million, or if we get the town reimbursements in the stabilization, you'd be up at um two point three six million. So somewhere between three point four percent or seven point eight percent of the the twenty five budget. So I think you get a sense for how. Important this issue of the town reimbursement of the turf fields is. I know we decided to just get it done. I can certainly see why. Um, this, I would say, has a significant consequential impact on how we operate our district. So I just would encourage the school committee to do whatever it can to help us stabilize this reserve picture because I think it's very important. Um, and then um, you know, moving down, if we, you know, get to a situation where we know from Essex that they. Can't do anything without an override over two and a half percent. Well, then your six sixty five goes up to about one point three million dollars. Um, so, you know, and that's not too dissimilar from where we were this year. You know, I know in some of the comments that, you know, I've had in talking with Anna, you know, there are ways to calibrate some of the assumptions. I think this has, I think we said a six percent assumption for health insurance. Right now, we're at three nine for fiscal twenty four. That's a little lower than average. But as Anna's correctly pointed out, we've had some savings. You you can definitely freak with these numbers, but I think. They're pretty useful for big picture directional. We we can't close, we don't have a calibration that will close our deficit. I think that's really the most important headline. We might be able to change the deficit size a little bit by doing things. And some of those will be actually program cuts like we've seen where we maybe eliminate, you know, retiring positions or something like that. But I think this is a good way to start because it shows you keeping things the same. Where do we look? And um, to hit that one point three million dollar deficit, you're going to be at, you know, four hundred thousand dollars of reserves. Or if you get the full reimbursement on the turf, you're at one point seven, one point seven million is under six percent of of but of budget in reserves. So these are substantial changes. Any way you look at it, it's clearly the turf field reimbursement is the biggest headline. So I know I've gone into a lot of painstaking detail, but um, this is, you know, pretty essential stuff, I think, from here on out. Um, we know we'll have a uh budget to actual update that we typically do. Uh, I think it's uh first meeting in November or late in October, which is once we have a full sense of all the comings and goings on both staffing and who's on benefits. So we get our first initial look at um run rate there. Um, and then we start heading right into uh into the budget season. So with all that said, questions?
Good. Can I just clarify too, for anyone listening, that when when we say if we get full reimbursement, it it is full reimbursement or no reimbursement from the towns. We don't get partial reimbursement from the towns at this point. The way it's been structured is Manchester voted to approve the reimbursement Essex is putting on it. Our fall town meeting, it is going to be up for vote um to do that. But I just want to clarify for anybody listening.
Could I just, two points of clarification.
Yeah.
Before we go to questions. Um, it's not on here and we don't know what's going to happen. But I have shared that we've cleared the first round of evaluation for Essex Elementary and they'll be here. It may amount to nothing, but they'll be here doing further examination of the building. Um, based on our statement of interest in October. So when we think about reserves, I know and have conflicting opinions about the importance of reserves on borrowing. But we, should we be successful in our quest? We'll need reserves for feasibility and we will have to line up for borrowing. So we'll have to think about that. Then, uh, can I just ask you to clarify one thing for people who may just be listening?
Yeah.
When we say that our general fund expense is plus three hundred and thirty six thousand, that's inclusive of additional revenue?
Separate.
Separate.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, and that's savings uh when it's plus. Yeah, not not over budget. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also to Pam's point about Essex Elementary, what you're not seeing on here, which you have been seeing in the past is a boiler at Essex. So, you know, uh, that's something that um. I think we are kind of right on the borderline of whether we need to push that through or not. I think if we've got a visit from MSBA this fall, and I've been talking with Jason, we can get through a winter with the existing boiler we have that has no backup, which is unusual to not have a backup. We could have some disruptions. Um, we are very aggressive in our proactive maintenance, but that it's an old unit. You know, at some point that if we don't get approved, other costs are going to come onto that capital plan. Vice versa, if we do, then you're going to be potentially earmarking, as Pam said, uh, money for save uh for feasibility. Obviously, I'd much rather be putting money towards an improvement than just essentially putting it down the tree.
Questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Um. The enrollment data, the enrollment sheet that you gave us, that has the industry in uh eleven ninety.
Yeah.
So I don't have any, but that is a key point is uh what we projected. What's the percentage saving?
Um, I will touch like that, let you know.
I thought it was uh one twelve.
Right up for you in just a second. But if you have another question, I can.
So this is uh, we are, our enrollment is lower than.
Yes.
So my point is, in two thousand point four, when we are looking at a three point five percent um estimate of the six hundred and fifty thousand. Um, of the over, that is assuming same enrollment. In reality, if the training of the enrollment is still continuing, just like this year, it depends on what a percentage is.
Two point five. Two point five percent.
So it's actually a little bit less than what the previous years, I think.
Yeah.
So I think we might want to incorporate that, the enrollment into the.
Yes, so when we do the budget.
Do you mean in twenty five?
Twenty five.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. So when we do the budget, one of the things we'll tend to look at is class size, classroom teachers, uh, you know, um, program. Yeah, how do you, can you keep the program the same based on enrollment with those shifts? And those would still be essentially level services if you don't need as many staff to service a slightly smaller population. Because of the way things work out where the kids are, that's where sometimes you may have, you know, a couple here, a couple there, in which case you don't have the ability to take down that P necessarily. So TBD, but a hundred percent to your point, we absolutely will have to do that as part of a build-up budget that starts from zero going up to what do we actually need? Yes.
So this is super helpful, but I was wondering if, I think last year we started doing the three reports a year.
We did what?
Three reports in a year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is a good baby step, uh, from zero before. I was wondering if this year we can actually go back, not go back, we can start at four times a year. Because when Erica and I went to the training, uh, they actually say it's pretty standard to have four times a year, uh, the quarterly reports. Especially because you mentioned the next report is going to be October November, especially now our uh, the fiscal year already ended. I wonder if we can add a final fiscal year number incorporated, everything that you talk about here.
So the main focus, and obviously we can do what every school committee would like us to do. The main focus of the coming month is to try to get our state reporting and brandy your report and E and D. And I think uh on time and done. And so with the limited staff that we have, I I, that's been what we're trying to prioritize. We certainly heard a lot of people saying, uh, or some people saying that they wanted to see the E and D numbers as early as possible. Uh, and I I will tell you firsthand, having been here for a while, that that's, you know, uh, it's the same people doing both. So additionally, I think just from a, what does the data actually give you? Until you get the analysis of who's come and gone and who's on benefits, that's the most important information that I, when I'm trying to figure out where we are that I can use. So we could do a report, it won't tell you a whole lot uh until we have that data in here. So I would, I think the schedule that we developed for last year is really useful in terms of providing new information. What you may remember is come the winter update, there weren't a ton of staffing updates and even fewer as the year went on. But the the school committee wants to do it four times. You know, I do know other districts do that. Um, and certainly something we could, we could pivot into.
So I don't, is that something we want to discuss as a group right now, giving that direction to add one? So I I would say since we're already into quarter one, right, I mean, we're already in it and we're adding additional meetings for the all boards meetings and things. I don't. I feel like that's a conversation we should have for the following year so that people can schedule out, so they can schedule out their work. But how do we want to?
Can I ask a clarification of Anna? If if the choice here is staff time on E and D versus another report that still has some unknowns, where would your priority be?
Personally, I would, when the fiscal year ends, I would like to see the final numbers so I can analyze the previous year. Which is going to help us to go into the two thousand twenty five when we do the budget.
Yeah.
Does that require?
We're going to have. I don't know.
So just to clarify, uh, the four times a year would be for fiscal twenty four. The fiscal twenty three and look back, this is what I've given you in the slides is. It is my nearly final numbers that will be finalized once we get through the end of your reporting and the end of E and D and the audit, which we've actually moved the audit up. A few weeks that we snagged. We've been trying to snag at an earlier spot with them because typically they've been in early November. We moved them up to the very first week of October so we could get earlier data. So that's going to be looking backwards. So once that end of um September, early October visit happens, I'd be happy to give you what we have on the final numbers for twenty three.
So to me, it sounds like the priority is get the E and D and on a time and a time of fashion so that you can close all that.
That's what we're doing now. I think to you said it best, based on the understanding that we have. And I think. I guess I just would say, uh, to me, uh, as a person who's been doing this for about a decade. And I don't want to, I don't want this to sound uh defensive. I don't think it's really a baby step to move to three uh projections a year. It's actually pretty time consuming. I think a lot of districts will do these push button reports that I've seen in other districts straight from their ledger. But they don't really do forecasting that tells you a whole lot of how they're going to end up. So what they can tell you is how much did you spend? But then the natural question is, well, how do we interpret this data? What's the seasonality? And the seasonality for teachers is different from admin versus TAs. So to really produce something that has a forecast that gives you really useful data, you need to start to unpack all of the staffing, which is about two thirds of our expenditures. To really see how they're all trending. So um, to me, it, I've seen it to be pretty time consuming work. Um, I do know the other districts do it. I think what I've seen is tends to be a little less forecast oriented and a little bit more year-to-date. So I, to me, year-to-date is of little utility as I evaluate the budget. Because I'm really trying to see how is this going to end up by the end of the year, because that's how appropriations work. If if the school committee prefers year-to-date reporting, that's much easier to do. Uh, and that's, that that certainly is easy to report on.
Well, I would sug- I would suggest going along with Jake that um, that since this is something that you've been building toward, toward getting that E and D certified earlier and earlier. And that's something that's been in our managerial things. And since we have made a pretty, I I actually would agree that that's a pretty big leap to go to three. Um, that that we let that ride for this year, see how it works. And then we can, we can look um at the end of the year and see what is it you're missing? Like what what are we missing in the process of the the whole thing here? Um, but I I also think that the E and D certification would be a higher priority than adding an additional. Not to mention, we don't have another time to report out on another.
I would say too, this is something we continue to want. We would need to come to you with some recommendations for software upgrades and changes. And personnel staff changes, because we're not equipped on either side right now to do the level of reporting that's being asked from us. It, it is the way it is because it's been prioritized at a certain level and staffed a certain level for many years. It's not, to his, it's not a complaint. It's just, we reorganized the office for greater outputs, but we did it in a budget neutral way. We have not expanded staff. We actually have reduced staff within the past fifteen years in that department. So we are all on board, but we need to talk real honestly about what it will take to get there. Because I've looked into Triton and said, why can't we do? Because I've looked into Triton and said, why can't we do this? Well, they have a completely different package for managing all of their payroll and personnel, which gives them greater capacity. It would take a year probably to identify, incorporate and implement a whole new software system for our central. So I think we're on board, it's exciting, but I don't think we can do it in the next two months.
Can I ask when these three reports produce, roughly?
November, January and June.
So I think that when we do the reports, totally agree, having the projection, it's of this year today compared to the budget is so much more helpful. But I think when we close out the two thousand twenty-three, to wait till October and November, when we do the projection of two thousand twenty-four, then include the twenty-three final number. To me, I would like to see, when you're presenting two thousand twenty-three, I would like to see it. The numbers behind your presentation basically, if we can. And it doesn't have to be beautiful format, but it's not projection, it's really just the close out year to date. So hopefully.
Clarify that, the entire month, well, August and September are dedicated to our state required end of year reporting, which has all of the numbers in, in detail that you're looking for, but it's a monumental task to go through that process. So the state requires us to submit by end of September, which is why we would have that outcome in October. So we are, we're trying to align with that state calendar for reporting.
Can I also just ask why it would be helpful to have four? I mean, you say it would be helpful to you, but I don't understand why.
It's just very standard, like.
Why would it be helpful? Like, what are you looking for? What do you need? It's those certain times.
Because it's a very basic financial management that you monitor on a quarterly basis, at a minimum. Like, I, I get before we didn't even have any reports, so three is better than nothing. But it's like, the four is very many, like it's very basic.
Like, what do you need? Because you're meeting all the guidelines. When you say it's like standard and basic, we're already doing all that by the state, you know, guidelines and what schools have to do.
Not really, because even the, the school committed board is saying that the guidelines fall.
I, I just wanted to clarify language, though, that we, we're meeting requirements. This, this is.
We're meeting our destiny.
We are meeting our destiny requirements. Yes, okay, I just.
But it also doesn't specify, I think, what I'm trying to say, I think a lot of those are year to date reports that are for there. I don't know a lot of districts that are doing detailed forecasts. So on the four times a year basis, I'd have to look more. We did look into it with some other districts. We did see that some of them, they have software systems that can encumber payroll, so that every time you have a payday, you're lowering one number and raising one number. We have two different systems, as Pam was saying. So that would require a little bit of a technological change. It's, it's, it is in some ways a very modern, common thing to see. And in corporate world, I know quarterly reporting is quite far, absolutely the norm. But I think what's a little different here from an operational standpoint is, there's just, you saw the payrolls that we sent. The payrolls for July and August are extremely minimal, because there's really, you know, only the year round people. You have one month for September, so you have a very uninformed set of data for Q one. It's just not a very, to me, it hasn't been very useful. I do get it would check a box in terms of doing the, quote unquote, the standard thing. But when Pam and I went to look at what, how other districts could do that, a lot of the data that they're providing was either forecast run from a different software system, or not really much of a forecast, it's just year to date. So it's just about how we get there.
So I, I think I'd like to take a moment to just recognize that, so I didn't know this request was coming. This would be a change, we would have to make it as a, as a request. So given that we're, we're talking about budget, I understand that's how it came. But at this point, is there a motion on the table? To make this official request of them?
So I'd like to request to have the, the guideline from the school committee board, as she says, to have the four, the four reports a year.
Is there a second? There's no second on that at this time, but that doesn't mean we can't talk about it in the future.
I'm going to second that, so that we can have a discussion.
I'd have to say, I, I hear you and I agree with you, I just don't think it's feasible and for the time and energy to get the extra report this year.
That's where I am as well. I'm not saying it's not something that if. I get that now, it's just, I don't.
I'm struggling with the, the wording of. Like, no, 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 I'm struggling with, is this, like, is this a, is this guidance? Is this a norm? Is this a recommendation? Like, can you? The M A, M A S C, whatever it is, I would be interested to read it, so maybe.
Yeah, I can figure the question, exactly in the training.
And I, I wanted to ask a question, and just to help those of us who don't spend as much time in, we front of financial reports as you do. Why, and I think this is maybe what Chris was asking too, like, what is it when you looked at, I mean, I, I know, all things being equal, it, it's always good to have more reports, but the obvious point, we also don't want this to be a check the box, create more work and take you away from important work that you have to do. So when you say that this fourth report would be more optimal, what type of thing would you be looking for that would tell you, okay, this is, this is how we're going to help the school community by seeing?
So the fourth report in my mind is actually the first report that's missing, which is the FY twenty-three, the final, preliminary final, which is what we presented here. I would have liked to see a little bit more detail, so I can compare to the previous year, compare to what we budgeted before, a projection before, and what is low, what is under, at a more detailed level. And in this summary, we only are, we're only seeing this like during the meeting, so they're sending it to us ahead of time. So that I had, I usually have a spreadsheet notes here to analyze it. So I can actually, you know, provide recommendations and what area that we can forget and whatnot. I really have no idea, I cannot really tackle those, or like review it. It's my, it's my duty to be given this in more detail, in more detail.
I guess, I understand a hundred percent, I understand a hundred percent. This, yeah, this is the format we used in the last year, which is a little more robust than the year before, but I certainly understand where you're coming from. You would maybe want the spreadsheet, so you could kind of dig into the numbers. I get it.
And am I misunderstanding that those numbers don't exist until you finish the end of year report, which isn't until the end of September?
And I was going to say, maybe the difference is this, which is typically our second meeting in August is when we deliver the initial closeout for the previous, for the fiscal year we're still, the previous fiscal year. So maybe we could say the compromises we do for in F, in this school year, and the fourth is in August of next year. Because that can give you the early look at how we're ending the previous year, before he goes to the full.
I would just give you the suggestion, you don't have to take, that the difference between end of August and early September means you're that much closer to the report that's final. And, but I, we could do it whenever you want.
Can I ask, so that, that report goes final in November, then you send it to the auditors?
We send it to the department head the end of September. And, and it gets audited separately from our big audit. Auditors also come for our district, they come different districts at all different times. For us, they come now, the first week of October. And that's when they do their final testing and analysis of all our fiscal twenty-three work. And they've also worked with us to make sure that our submission to the D O R for E and B is, you know, very precisely done, so we have minimal back and forth in the D O R. Because there's just some more arcane accounting items that are better to have their input on, from my perspective. Requires us to have less in-house staffing on the technicalities. So that, in theory, gets done also by the end of September, early October, to the goals to have it be done by.
I hate to take one of those numbers, but the, this report, which is great, is, came from something. So the data is already there. All I'm asking is preliminary easy to wrap up, because our fiscal year ended June already, right, September, and then we are not going to see the final, end of the year, two thousand twenty-three report. So October, November, to me, that's pretty late. And so I, I, I do say that I encourage people to want to see the end of the year final report. You know, within three months after the fiscal year wrapped up, it's not too much to ask.
Yeah, in a business, I would tend to agree with you, we have a whole accounting team. But just, you probably remember that over the summer, you're paying some of the lingering fiscal twenty-three invoices that are coming through. My experience is that every year, that process has been accelerated earlier and earlier, as we've had, for lack of a better term, a enhancement of professionalism in the business office and just restructuring process. So it continues to move forward, but there's still stuff happening, because we don't have two or three people who are working on this, like a typical thirty million dollar organization would have. So one thing that we can do, I think Pam is trying to say that, is we can invest in more staffing to give us that satisfaction. I, I wonder if that juice is worth it.
More staffing means more money.
Yeah.
I think, right now, we have to remember, we don't know what this year is going to bring us, folks. We have, we have conversations with our two towns, with, with. I'm not inclined to add, right now, by way of direction with my vote, to add to your plate right now, knowing that we are already pushing to get E and D certified earlier, knowing what the deadlines are, and with the unknowns of what our two towns are coming to the table with, even the preliminary conversations we've had, you know, in, with what Essex is facing. So that's where I stand. Are there any other, any other discussion of this?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, I agree with that, and that's where I'm going to come out. But I want to also say that I do agree with Anna, that there's something I can't totally get my head around, that I think it probably is just a staffing issue, but I feel like we should be aiming to do better than if the fiscal year ends in June, not being able to get to our final numbers. And I, and if staffing is the only way, then I, I kind of think we should consider that.
But didn't we already add one F D in the budget?
Well, we still haven't hired that person first. And I think as Pam was saying, you know, right now, we're going off of essentially fifteen year old software too. So I mean, I'm happy to do an upgrade, that's going to be about a year transition to do that. I mean, it's really about what the priorities are. And I, this is not something that is impossible for us to commit. It's just a question of what we want to spend our time doing.
Speaking of what we want to spend our time doing, is, is.
Yes, I mean, we have a question.
Moving the question? Okay, motion on the table, all in favor. Motion fails, thank you. But I think the message is heard. And I'm more looking.
And I understand, I understand.
So can I just ask a couple quick questions?
Yeah.
So, I'll be just, so that I check my understanding. In FY twenty-three, we put a placeholder of five hundred and twenty thousand in our reserves in order to cover operating budget. So if I hear you correctly, we're really only spending, likely spending ninety-two K. We're not spending that entire five twenty to cover our FY twenty-three expenses.
Correct, oh, yeah, that's correct. Go ahead.
For FY twenty-four, did we not put in an assumption of reserves to cover our FY twenty-four?
We did, we had a much lower number, that was part of the compromise budget.
Right, is that represented on this last page, though?
That is represented in the E and D estimate of one point two six billion.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then last small thing, is transportation stabilization a separate reserve? I thought there were only four. Where does that sit?
Well, the transportation stabilization is a one-year carry forward, that's all you can do, it's not.
So it's not really reserved?
Yeah, so each year, we use it to bring down the expenses in a subsequent year. We won't be able to do that in twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
And I ask about two thousand twenty-three.
Yep.
The revenue, we are a hundred and ninety-one K plus, meaning that we are over, we have more revenue than the budget, right? And then the expense, positive three thirty-six K versus budget, you mean that we exactly minus, it's less? So overall, together, the net, we actually positive net five hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So if we were budgeted to use five hundred and twenty K net, negative into the reserve, we actually five twenty-seven, so we actually surplus seven thousand.
Correct, but that's provided that we keep the construction interest, which we kind of already made an agreement we wouldn't do. And it represents a, a little over a hundred thousand dollars. So that's not in the budget as a, something we intended to get. When we budget interest income, it was a much lower number based on prior actual. So you are correct, it would be over the five twenty, but I think we would have a problem if we let that all drop, because there are people who are saying, that's not operating money to spend, it's been agreed upon that it should follow capital costs. So that's why the ninety-two thousand assumes that we're taking up the hundred thousand. Otherwise, it'd be minus eight.
I just have a quick comment, like reserves of only one point three percent
Yeah.
are very disturbing. Where do you see that?
If, so part of the, at the very, very bottom of the last page, if, if we end up at two point five to Essex. And without turf.
Yeah.
Worst case scenario, which is a real scenario.
Very disturbing to me, especially when we're going to try and negotiate a, we're going to be contract. So people can have that in their head. It's really important.
So on that note, just going a little, not out of order, but I mean, does that lead in nicely to the fiscal year twenty-five budget preview? So that we can know what we're working with here a little bit?
Probably.
Are we in agreement that that makes sense? Nobody is saying otherwise.
Yeah, that was the six hundred and fifty-five thousand. I mean, these numbers are taken pretty directly from the information that we had presented when we had our public hearing in May around what we might cut if there was no compromise budget. And we looked at the pie charts that talked about the three components. One is just getting down to an assessment target, three and a half percent that we have kind of, sort of, at some point, had some agreements as being a reasonable target for a a, a well-functioning school system of our, of our caliber, three and a half percent was a lean but effective number. It wasn't short, it wasn't high, it was kind of appropriated in line with other districts. But once you start bringing that number down to solve apportionment problems, which some would argue are just the world we live in, and others would argue not really our problem to solve, that's when that deficit starts to balloon from six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, like up to you know, this one point three estimate. As I was speaking about earlier, there are ways to calibrate those estimates by changing assumptions, which we could certainly do, or running scenarios, for example, to say, well, let's look at health insurance at three, six and nine. You know, those types of things, a hundred percent we can do that. That's kind of, I think, like you said, standard, good business practice to do. We can do all those things heading in. We have, because we haven't yet done our first budget to actual on fiscal twenty-four on staffing and health insurance, it's impossible to get too granular on fiscal twenty-five, because all of that is based off of twenty-four people we have in place. Years ago, we moved from doing budgeting at the tentative that was just based off of put a percentage on the total number to go through all the people, run through their steps, figure out how many people put in for column moves, you know, that kind of thing. And then build up based on enrollment, when enrollment has to, so that's the kind of detail, but I think it's really necessary to do a real calibration. I think this is just a starting point, and I think it's pretty, I think it's pretty reasonable analysis, eye level, based on what do we know about contract, and what do we, you know, assuming six percent health insurance, with the rest being not many surprises.
And just to add on to that, during the collaborative meeting, you know, one thing people ask is, why don't we change the formula? A portion of formula, and that will solve the six hundred K issue, or one point three reading.
Yeah.
The, the conclusion, not going to conclude, the discussion was that the changing of the agreement is going to take years. And then so, we shouldn't think on this year is going to happen. We might start a process, there might be some stage one, some sort, but it's probably not going to happen this year. So we should plan accordingly, using this.
All sorts of other.
Yeah.
It might solve one problem.
Exactly. And the managers that might not agree.
Well, changing the formula. And, and neither might Essex, and neither might the committee. So that's, that's a bigger conversation. But it does, it does, the transition into the idea that, that we don't have all of the final numbers, or we don't even have the preliminary numbers yet for, for twenty-five. What we do know is we're starting out of the gate with, you know, roughly six hundred and sixty-five thousand, if we're looking at three and a half. That's not going to be fixed by our ideas for fundraising and our ideas for nipping and tucking here. That's a bigger thing, and it's only going to balloon if Essex needs it lower. So we, as a committee, part of our work, and I think this is maybe, I, I don't want to stop anyone from asking questions, but it's a good transition into the conversation. but it's a good transition into the conversation of the work that we have ahead of us for this year. Is that we as a committee are gonna have to decide together, and we are going to have to come to, spend some time and come to some consensus, not tonight, but generally, um, especially after the first all-boards meeting, about what position are we going to take here? Uh, I mean, the possible outcomes here, if Essex can, can only bear two and a half percent, doesn't have the, doesn't feel, it has the flexibility. Some of the options here are, um, to pursue an override again, or to, again, look at a structural change, but that's not gonna fix it for this year. Um, to really encourage the town to make some changes to their own budget, that is, that is an option as well. Um, but we're gonna have to decide whether we support a level services budget, which means what, what we have, what we're offering, the offerings don't change, scope of program doesn't change, or whether we're gonna ask Pam and Abby to deliver us a level funded budget, just what we have, or whether we're gonna ask, we're prepared to ask them to meet Essex's need, or whether we're prepared to say, no, we're going forward with, with, you know, with a level services budget or expansion or what have you, I don't think any of us are in that mindset right now, but maybe we are. Um, the outcomes of that being potentially an override ask, if that's what Essex chooses to do, potentially fallout from that again. So, we have to be prepared with all of those, um, things, and we're starting at least much earlier than we did last year. We're, we're picking up right at the end of the year, we know what the paths are, we know where we end up. If this fails, and then this fails, and this fails, so, um, we have to be prepared as a group to come to some consensus about what we're going to support and move it forward, but it can't take place until we have all the, all the information on the table, at least of the first all-boards meeting, and then, um, some money. You know. Hold on, Erica was raising your hand.
And this is, everybody else probably understands this, but I just wanna make sure I understand it correctly. The, the final bullet that we're talking about right now, the fiscal year twenty-five revenue deficits. Um, the first sub-bullet says six hundred and sixty-five K at three and a half total assessment, so you're saying assuming the towns agree to three and a half, we are still going to have six hundred and sixty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah. Chris is shaking his head.
I just wanna make, when you say the towns agree, so the three and a half is just the school district budget increase? That's gonna be a very different percentage for each town, right? So, it's not like, you know, Essex agrees to three and a half percent, and that's where we'll be, that's not the case, right?
Yeah, if the budget that we send to the two towns, if the total bill is a three and a half percent. But we do it with collaborative efforts.
But there is still this remaining deficit.
Yes.
I think it might be helpful to talk about and agree, uh, what do we mean by level services? Because last year, I mean, um, this year, two thousand and twenty-four, when we did the budget, um, in April, the level services, then a month later, the level services is like eight hundred K higher.
I agree that that's a conversation, we wanna make sure we're all on the same page, but I think we need to have that when we're having the conversation about what are we all in support of? And right now, we don't need to have that, that's just something that we need to know is going to be coming. Um, but right now, you don't have to decide that, but I agree that, yes, we will wanna make sure we're all working with the same language and same understanding. Yeah. So, for right now, again, I don't wanna cut off any questions, if you had questions about Abby's presentation in particular, but now that we have an idea of what fiscal year twenty-five has, do we wanna take a look at, at, at what we have on our plates? And how we wish to address it, that's, the summer work continued. Here, can you have that? Well, we've got it, so.
I have the list from the.
The bucket list.
Yeah.
Bucket list that we all together, or some of us put together.
So, I think I'd like to preface this conversation with just a cou- a couple thoughts, which is that, you know, we start with the calendar of, of what's been plugged in from past years, and, and the things that we, um, need to have reported out, and I think that, as we learned last year, um, pretty clearly, we run out of time very quickly. So, there may be things on here that, I, I, I mean, I think we need to choose tonight, what is our very top couple priorities? And how do we structure it out from there, because there may be some things on here that, that are, that we can not do, or that we can do differently, so that we can prioritize time for us to discuss, you know, where we are with the budget and how we can support that moving forward. If that's a possibility, I know all of these presentations and things are important in different ways, but we also have to decide. And part of that is gonna be, how do we choose to run our meetings? So, I've been asking this at different times over the last years. I mean, right now, getting to the meat of it, it is eight o'clock, so, um, all of it's important. Do we want to have strict timeframes for our meetings and just prioritize agenda within that? Or do we wish to let them go? I, I can do any of this, I just need some direction from, for how we're gonna do this. Yeah.
So, I will say I cannot do any of that. We are often a single-parent household, and I need to be able to arrange childcare according to when our meetings are held. So, I need to have, and it can be late.
But you need to have a.
Then I need to know how late it's going to be, so that I can arrange for my children to wear that at a reasonable.
And I would say, while we are reviewing this later on, it might be, um, useful to think which ones can be tackled within the subcommittees. So, that way, if you can say, like a pre-vetted, a free work, majority of the work on some of the things, I mean, that would save the entire committee time. Um, with some like a reporting bag, with some consensus, just like FYI, and then maybe go on it, whatever it might be, but not the entire committee had to do every single list. Right?
Yeah.
I think what makes an agenda like this difficult is that we have a start and an end time, but we have. Right, so it's not, we're not saying, oh, um, we estimate that the superintendent's report is going to take ten minutes today. Or the superintendent's report is gonna take an hour, because there's a lot of, you know, we just, this, everything else between the beginning and the ending is.
Yeah.
To have all the materials sent to us ahead of time, so we can read it, so we don't have to go through slide by slide or page by page.
So, some of those, so I, I will say this on, on that point, so we can, we can do timed agendas. Just know that if we do a timed agenda, I'm going to stick to it. So. I, I, and I don't want everyone to then come at me about being a stickler for sticking to the timed agenda, if we decide as a group, that's what we're going to do, that's what we need to do. So, as long as we're all aware before we make that decision together. Um, but as far as all of the things, we do get as much of the packet as possible, but this is something that has come up, you know, here and there, that sometimes
There are things.
There are things that come up, or that they pull together at the last second, and so the question becomes, is it better not to give it to us? Because we're gonna be frustrated that we didn't have it in advance, or is it better to give us everything? So, that's what I'm hearing.
At least give it to us the day of, not during the meeting, so that way, then before we tell, we can still review it to save time.
Well, you might be able to, but I don't know that is, I don't know that it's. That everybody will be able to.
And it really, it really just comes down to, if, if there's something that they can't get to us by a certain deadline, are we then saying we don't want it? In the meeting.
I mean, we should to next week, I mean, the next meeting.
Yeah, so I put out the packet to you before we had the financial update, so we would push the financial update to the next meeting.
Or we accept that sometimes we get the information.
Because we have so many things on the thing, uh, on this anyway, so if one thing gets pushed, as long as there's an impact, the overall budget process or whatever it might be, maybe some things could be. If the material.
I know it's fine with you, I know you guys will do whatever, but I think this is something we have to talk about, because as, as an example, you know, if, if pulling together, you know, an enrollment report, and, and we're not expecting it in advance, but you happen to have it, then, then.
With the rationale, there's no action, this is just a report.
Yeah.
Sharing of information, you need to do nothing with it tonight, but receive it.
But that was the case with the financial report too, so I feel like we need to be clear about our expectation, like, do we want to receive all the information they have ready to present? Or do we want them to choose to withhold that?
Wanna receive, well, I think, wait, this conversation started about efficiency, and about how we get through our meetings in a more timely way. And I would say, in a perfect world, we are going to be more efficient if we've had a chance to review the experience. Um, so, if there's a way that if things, obviously, that, I mean, this is all great information, so it's not a, I'm glad we've, we've had both of them. Um, but I'd like to think that choice isn't either is, isn't all or nothing, but if the kid, that maybe it does get pushed to the next meeting, and therefore, we review it more efficiently, and maybe we got through it faster than we did tonight, I'm not sure if that's realistic or not, but typically, that would be how it works with a normal group of people. If you see it in advance.
Yeah.
You get through it more quickly.
Always agree.
Yeah, I, I'm not weighing in, I don't have any opinion on this, except to offer the consideration that many times, what might be frustrating to you is the public opportunity to report and put on the record the information.
Say that again.
Um, sometimes it may be frustrating to efficiency.
Yeah.
But something like the financial update is important to have a readout of on the record, on a reporting, that's then part of the public record and share, so sometimes it's for public consumption and not just for consumption, and we might wanna talk about which items need to be read out, even though they're not.
I think it, so, what you're saying is you want everything in the packet. Like, I mean, I, I think that's what we're saying, though, is that this stuff has to come out, you were, it was on the agenda, you were gonna give this, this update anyway.
Yeah.
You want it in the packet, are we saying we don't want it if it's not done in time for the packet?
I don't think we're saying that at all.
Okay.
If it gets, uh, pushed to the next meeting, uh, it doesn't mean that it won't get a readout into the public, it just that it would be delayed. Um, but if the delay is reasonable, it doesn't impact other things, while we work on other things, um, personally.
I think that where we run into these rabbit holes often is when we're consuming new information, and we haven't had time to process our own questions around it. And then and then Pam and Abby have not had time to process their answers, because we haven't asked our questions in advance, so they haven't gotten answers together in advance. And so, I wonder if the presentation of materials can still come, whenever the presentation of materials comes, and then question, like, send your questions after the meeting, and we can compile them and discuss this at the next meeting, because we didn't have the information before this meeting.
I think that becomes strictly for public consumption, so, you know, we're receiving information. Well, it's very disjointed, right, like you've gotten something.
But we have established a norm, right, where when we receive the packet, then we send our questions in advance. And so, to me, the disconnect is that we don't have time to process our questions in advance, and then the conversation is less efficient.
I guess I would favor pushing, if, if we're not going to address a particular presentation, I'd rather push the material for public consumption and questions to the same meeting.
The problem we're trying to solve here right now is that. So, again, what is the problem we're trying to solve? The problem we're trying to solve is that, for instance, looking at this, this physical information didn't come to us in time to digest it and be prepared with it. So, unless you see another solution, I guess what I'm saying is what we're asking, if that is a problem for us, is that everything that's gonna be presented to us needs to be in the packet, but we've already asked them to up the timing of the packet, so we're taking that. So, we just, I need to know how that works for you guys.
Or delay it, there's another option, if we don't have the time.
We'll do the best we can, just let us know. This, I'm gonna, I'm taking a bullet on this one, it wasn't ready for the packet, I thought it was reported, reportable, and not so much for discussion tonight.
Yeah.
I should have withheld it and pushed it to the next meeting and not. I don't think you've had too many of these, what I'm very conscious of is that our goal last year was Thursday packets.
Yeah.
Um, we didn't always make that mark, so I'm trying to stay away from Fridays, it means that we will start now. We'll take maybe a day off tomorrow, maybe not, and start producing the packet, go out next Thursday. So, on Thursday, I mean, we were a factory of school committee.
I know you were.
Last year, and it, it takes away from other things, so less is more, I guess.
That might be.
I, I think this has more to do with setting the agenda than when material gets put in front of us. To me, I appreciate that we got this information tonight, I would not have wanted it to then withheld, I mean, yes, next meeting would have been probably just assigned for the enrollment, you know, but the budget, I think, was the right time to do it, and we didn't have it, and it took some extra time to put it together, that's fine. We can always come back next meeting if we still have questions and follow up. Right, so to me, it's more about trying to set an agenda that is doable, to Kate's point, in the timeframe. Um, that's, I think, if, if you know that you're not, we're not gonna get the material, plan for a little more time in the meeting. If you're able to get us the material, then you can expect a little more efficient conversation. So, I think it has more to do with establishing or predicting the agenda flow than trying to set a rule about whether or not to give us information.
And we can do that too, we can, we can change the flow, we can, we can make this go faster, we can follow it tighter model here, we absolutely can, and, and have that moving forward, it's, it's I've been asking, I'm, I'm looking for the interest of the committee, because in, in some meetings, we.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that I think it's setting the agenda, which really is, even Pam, from my understanding, right? It's more a matter of planning for what you anticipate the discussion to be, right? It's not a matter of setting a rule, information or not, or tight agenda or not. It's more a matter of, all right, we know that the committee's not gonna get the information until the meeting. So, let's spend, let's plan for a little more time there, so that they can digest it and ask clarification. If we, if we're able to get in the information first, then we can set a tighter agenda for that item.
For starters, I don't know that I've ever sat in a school committee meeting that was over at eight, so we can stop putting eight o'clock on.
Ones, last spring, that we ended at eight oh four. There was one, but not eight.
To do our routine business and presentations in the two-hour timeframe, and maybe if something is interesting or exciting, or catches our eye, or someone gets a little enthusiastic and goes over, we bleed into the eight thirty, but we should be able to control time to get there.
We should, but it requires us to understand that we don't get to have the prolonged conversation about all of this. And again, it's just about setting the norm, we can do that, I mean, we, we, we can. If that's something we care about, that's where I'm asking, do we care about eight o'clock as an end time, do we care about eight thirty as an end? What, because then, I can plan that, right now, this is meaningless at the moment, and, and frankly, over the past year, it's the anticipating where a conversation is gonna go, is, I mean, there's no anticipating with this group, where a conversation is going to go, or how long it's going to take, without it feeling like, without me then feeling, hearing feedback that, well, that got cut off, or didn't get to share my point of view, so we need to understand as a group together, that's fine, we can do that, but this is the plan. So, why don't we just pick an end time and try?
It's gonna be a really busy year, any of us who thought that we were gonna get out of the meetings at eight o'clock today. Uh, Eddie, at eight o'clock, I mean, like this year, I think is unrealistic.
Which is, again, fine. I just need to know how late. Yes, I would never.
Well, how about this, we don't have to decide this very minute, what time we're going to end. The next meeting we have starts at six, and then at seven, we have the all-boards meeting, which does have a hard end of nine at that point. So, let's, let's get to that, let's see how that goes, and then headed, you know, send our thoughts about, as we set the agenda for the following meeting.
But are we gonna decide now about what we just talked about, so we're not just talking all the time?
I think you make, you, probably overstepping, but you need to make some decisions, because right now, you're three meetings behind.
Yeah.
So, you are going to have mounting agendas, uh, I had to restructure, you should have been completing your goal-setting for the year tonight. Um, we were scheduled to have our first school improvement report out, so update and outlook for the following year. On the nineteenth, I had to bump those because of the all-district meeting, so now we're gonna stack um, elementary on the third, secondary on the seventeenth, we even hold those to fifteen minutes apiece, that's at least thirty minutes. Plus questions, so that will be a forty-five minute, let's call it a forty-five minute component of the agenda for those nights. So, and you have to revisit your unfinished list, so it, it is what it is, but I think there has to be. I think everyone's trying to accommodate everybody's individual style, and you're going to have to get from the eye to the read, and just kind of give up some of what the individual wants and preferences are, and get to some common agreement.
Okay, well, why don't, go ahead.
I was just saying, the core business function, we need to take priority over people's, you know, wants and, and needs, and you know, I don't wanna say projects, but for lack of. you know, I don't want to say projects, but for lack of a better term, but, you know, we have a core responsibility that we have to pursue and that should take priority over everything else. And so that's what the agenda should state. And then if there's time left over at the end, then we can talk about other things that we want to talk about.
So do we want to say, just to start, let's, let's set our meetings from six to eight thirty? We never get out of here before eight thirty. Shall we just give that a try and then we can prioritize?
We'll do these things, folks.
Give it a try for a meeting, see how it goes.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think the expectation should be nine.
Okay. I think nine is realistic and.
Yeah. Thank you.
Reasonable.
Because, like Pam said, we already have too much. The budget this year is going to take a absorbing amount of time, more than usual. And you know, everything on this list is great. I, I read it all, you know, before, and that's why I didn't have anything to add. It's all very important and great, but unfortunately, the only thing at this point, since we kicked the can down the road last year is that we, in my opinion, the only thing we need to do this year is figure out how and and which way we're going to fund our district.
Okay, I can write nine. Straw poll, all in favor, nine.
Nine, good. And I take Emma's point about we have subcommittees and I think that at some point, our conversations can turn to, should we refer this to a subcommittee?
So we'll see if we can vote on the subcommittee.
Yes.
Yes, it's on the list.
It's on the list. So let's take a look then, though, at what are the things, what are our have tos versus our want tos this year? The have tos. We have to understand, come to some consensus and make some hard decisions about the budget. We have to. Anyone else have some have tos?
Well, I mean, what is the timeframe? Like, right now, we have to create our subcommittees for this, the year. We cannot operate without subcommittees.
Yeah, yes, and we do need to do that, but let's look at what the, what we have to accomplish with them this year. If we're policy light versus negotiation heavy, I'm looking at what is, what do we have to accomplish this year?
All right, but so part of that, part of the budget is a reserve policy.
And I would add that we have to have a communication plan.
Yep.
We have to do your negotiations, the contracts.
Yeah.
The regular business.
I think that sent you a list of the carry forward obligations, not necessarily what we'll what is not to, the wants for, but what we need for. Oh, it's on the.
Where it is.
On the.
It's on the back of the calendar. Yeah, don't we also.
We have to do superintendent evaluation.
Yeah, it's on the list.
Yeah, is that a meeting?
We read it in. Yeah.
So I think part of the challenge here is that if we frame it just by have to, right? I mean, some, some of the things are helpful to do those haptics, right? So last year, the issue around class size and FTEs, you know, that analysis was an issue that said those, right? And recommendations and whatnot around educational program cuts or decisions or restructuring, right? Those are things that factor in. Are they actives?
It helps.
Not really, but they are important issues within doing the budget.
I think they are, but I also think some of that took an outsized role. And it's our job to prioritize what we set our time for.
If, if stuff coming from the outside is outsized.
I think we had a lot of distractions last year.
I spent a lot of time on distractions last year.
But it's not necessarily outside. I think what you meant, it is inside. What we agree is the secondary half to maybe, if you will. Uh, maybe that, that helps with the primary have tos. Maybe the subcommittees can handle that.
I mean, but we, we can classify them as distractions, but they were important.
Yeah.
Factors in town decisions.
And I don't think they were important enough to spend six full months on.
Well, we can do it more efficiently. We don't have to spend six months, but that's why we have subcommittees.
So it seems like people just really want to get to the subcommittees. I'm seeing this a different way. I don't, I don't care if we want to do it that way. It's come up each time. So if you want to just talk about the subcommittees, that's fine. I guess my question is I don't know what you're going to do with this list. Yeah. Well, we have to. So for instance, if we're looking at the calendar of what, what we can accomplish, right, what we need to accomplish, and we've got, we've got a one hour business meeting, shortened business meetings for superintendents' goals, right? Because we have the all boards meeting, then we've got school improvement list. So I'm, what I'm envisioning here is taking the other things that we wish to incorporate where there's time to incorporate it. If, if it makes sense to put them there. That's, that's what I'm envisioning here. But I'm also, yes, the stuff that can be done in subcommittees.
Yeah, I was going to say that I think that the disconnect is that I was thinking of how do we break this list up into our subcommittees because our agenda is already so full.
Can I add on to that? Is the aptitude. I totally agree that's our core business. I recommend that because they are not going to have to all these presentations. Instead of forty five minutes, maybe twenty minutes. I mean, we just need to figure out, incorporate the have to, that that is a priority than to sit there till our presentation more than time.
So here's what I will say about that, and we can set whatever expectation we want for presentations as a group. Before last year, those presentations didn't take two hours. Before last year, the presentations were fifteen to twenty minutes, and then we had some questions and it was a half hour, forty minute thing. Starting last year, our level of questioning and the detail that we as a committee were demanding of our people led to increasingly detailed presentations to incorporate all of the information even more perhaps than than we asked, but in anticipation of that. If we want to give direction that we want presentations to fit in a certain box, we can do that. And it's on us to then say how, how are we going to handle it if we don't have time in that window then to, for all the Q and A? So how do we still do that?
Can I just clarify? Because we did not ask questions of presentations in the set, in our session.
I think we're dead off then.
We absolutely.
But when we did not.
It didn't take, we didn't have an hour's worth of questions.
Go back to the district improvement plan.
I think, I think what I'm hearing you say is that because we ask questions prior to the meeting, planning of those don't.
I think that the, the level of detail, I don't think it mattered whether it was prior or in the meeting, the level of detail that we as a committee were requesting both prior and in the meetings was yielding longer presentations. That doesn't mean that it's bad.
So are we?
We just have to be aware of it.
Are we suggesting that we stop asking questions? That doesn't seem quite the right way to go here.
I'm not suggesting that we stop asking questions. What I'm suggesting is that if we are going to limit the time, if we're saying you get, you get twenty minutes to present, what happens? So if, if we all have all our questions and and our stuff wasn't in there, are we then going to limit ourselves to a Q and A time? And what happens to the things that we're left with after that? That's what I'm asking.
Can I ask a different question here? It sounds like what we're doing is we're starting with a fixed amount of time and trying to figure out what we can accomplish. Can we flip that and ask, what do we need to accomplish and then figure out how much time we need to do it? We can schedule, change the schedule. This is our schedule.
We can.
I think that part of the takeaway, though, is that it's not that we shouldn't be asking questions. It's that maybe we need to be more judicious about the questions that we're asking.
I think that's a really tricky, I, I mean, I told, I, I agree with you and I bet everybody sitting here agrees with you. It's just that most people think that they're being judicious about their questions. And we just all have a different view because it's a very subjective thing. So I think that's going to be tough. And I actually I think what you're doing makes sense, Teresa. I think we, we do need to figure out right now what things we absolutely have to accomplish this year. And then I think Jake's question is the next right one. How much time do we need to accomplish that? So let's keep doing it. Is there anything else?
Well, I mean, some of these, some of these carry forward items are going to happen in subcommittee. So the, you know, the complaint policy and stipends and all of that, that's all happening outside and being reported back to us.
But those aren't have to. So we're going by your have to frame.
So, but those are actually, like.
This is at the bottom.
Those are, so those are from our.
Do you have the calendar?
Those are unresolved issues from content that have been referred to, like, joint, like.
J L M S, the TTA contract negotiations, the twelve month employee agreement and the reserve policy. Those are the, those are the have tos in addition to the big budget thing.
I thought I heard you say complaint policy.
It says it right. It is.
That is a have to per the teacher contract. It's enough.
So those are the carry forward have tos. Some of those happen in meetings. Some of them just report out, report it out in meetings.
Can you read what you have somewhere so we can keep track of what happens?
It's on the.
But it's a reserve policy, a have to.
I would say, yeah.
Everybody's list. It's on everybody's list, but I mean, I agree, it's a priority.
I, I.
Figuring out how to frame.
I would say, eh.
It is the budget. If we don't have a correction and we don't, like, they could just keep using our reserves and what they want to be where.
A reserve policy, a reserve policy doesn't keep you from watering your reserves. It just gives you a foundation to argue that you need a certain amount.
I think that if our member towns are going to rely on their reserve policies, then we are leaving ourselves. I think we'd be silly not to.
I believe that's a critical piece of, of working out the budget issue.
I think we have to have the long term financial plan in more detail than just the one number. Because it is some high level more detail, both the management, because that will help us to look at our budget for next year and also how we're going to use it.
You mean the deficit.
Yeah, what's the one number?
Right now, we have the one number, which is the one point three million dollar, and it goes down to whatever million that is the one number. But we need to have a more high level of just four, five, six different category and then plan it out, what all that means. To make sure that everybody's on the same page of what, what it means. So like you mentioned, I, including some basic assumptions. So it's crystal clear, flag and why, we don't have to have a fine print and then we can play things out.
I might recommend or ask the board to consider that, just listening to the different voices. When we talk about budget, it means something different to everyone at this table. And when we talk about solving the budget problem, it means something different to everybody at this table. I think it would be in our best interest to get a facilitator to help us define the issue and come up with a common outlook. So when we can get to a communication plan, because we can't communicate if we don't have common understanding or a common approach. We may have different ideas about the best solution, but we're not talking at all about the same things right now. So I'd ask that maybe we reach out to MASC and ask for a facilitator to help us clarify, crystallize. And maybe that will create some efficiency because everyone is talking from the heart and with good ideas and solutions to solve the problem as they see it, but it's not at all on the one. And some of it isn't even on target with what the real problem is.
Yeah. That's fair. I also think some of this, the conversation about the budget generally is going to clarify itself a little bit after our first all boards meeting, when we have a sense of when we, all of us, and this is something that I have concerns about moving forward with a finance subcommittee. We all, this year, we don't have the luxury of not all having all the same information as much as humanly possible. Um, so I think that some of that's going to clarify itself. There's, but there's absolutely, we have to get a fiscal year twenty five budget passed. That is, that is a have to. We're going to have to do that thing. The, the big picture outlook of, of planning for the long term and having solved the bigger picture thing we have to do with our town partners together, but we are going to have to decide upon a fiscal year twenty five budget. There's no question about it. We're, we're just going to have to do that. I'm feeling less than productive. I'm feeling like this, this conversation is not being very productive right now. What, does, does anyone have a suggestion about what might make it more productive right now?
What do we need to finish tonight? What needs to get wrapped up right now? What do you talk about?
Technically, nothing. This is our, this is for us to know and do. The, um, we do need to decide if our negotiation subcommittee remains our negotiation subcommittee.
Get you on a subcommittee, is what we need to do.
So if we want to just knowing or moving forward without all of the information about, I, I just, I don't see us understanding fully the big picture of what, what is happening tonight. Yeah.
Uh, so we have a list. We also have a priority.
We have a list of everyone's personal interests, yes.
Right, right, right. So, um, is the next step to have the subcommittee and then divide and conquer, some go to subcommittee? Or like the, are we, are you going to redo the calendar to incorporate some of the must do or the priorities things? What, what is going, what's happening next?
That's, that's.
Yes. So, Tim, just to be clear, this list was not meant to be personal interest, although maybe a few of them are. But this list was meant to be things that we identified through last school year that we said we got to put a delay on because we don't have time to deal with it.
But I think that there were things that we individually cared about.
Okay, so, so the intent, the, the way this conversation was framed several times was that we were going to go through this list and identify if it is truly an issue for school committee. And what priority they take.
Then let's do that. Do you want, we can do that. That would be a more productive use.
Okay, then let's do that.
Great. All right. Let, so.
And there is overlap across the columns. So if you see like communication process, that's in like three or four of the columns.
So Jake, since this was, this has become your um, your baby.
All I'm doing is documenting. I am not prioritizing, not owning, not owning the, the.
But you've probably.
Perspective on these.
You've probably looked most closely at it and you know where the overlaps are. So do you want to walk us through this? But what I guess I would ask is that we not maybe each spend time discussing our, like, our drive for, like, let's do this part in an efficient way. We've had our chance to put it all on there.
So as we read through it, I would then actively agree of voting to see what is party, what is not.
I think first we need to see what is ours to do and what could even, what already falls into stuff that we're already doing.
What falls under a have to for the year and then what can be handled by a subcommittee?
Yeah.
Or what is personal.
Separate.
Yeah. Yeah, right, okay.
All right. So clearly one right at the top here across the number of them is establishing some sort of communication process.
Yep.
You know, presumably that's about the budget as much as anything else, but I think last year there were clear issues around communication and transparency and that's reflected here.
Yeah. So that's a must do. Must have. Well, it's a
Priority.
There are several that are related to policy, reserve being one of them. Uh, there are a couple other kind of budget related ones under Hannah's uh, second cell there, but the main one is the reserve policy and we've already talked about that. The second other policy one that's in my list, the complaint policy and the grievance contract policy, which I now understand is J L M S.
Yeah.
So could the other ones.
So that's already taken care of.
Well, I don't know what you mean by taken care of. It's on our list, right?
It's, yeah, it's a non-negotiable. It's already in processing to do.
Can you clarify for me what those two are, please?
What, what you are?
So grievance contract policy. Help me.
I thought that was different than, than the complaint policy because it had to do with how, how parents bring things. That's, that's all wrapped together.
You meant their grievance process.
No, I thought it was.
Yeah, so we, we addressed the complaint policy in negotiations last year. It was given to both MITA and then MTA and our attorneys for review. There are some attorney conversation about some things that they. About some things that they could do to make it a little bit better aligned with our legal obligations. But then it was referred to a joint labor management group to. Have ongoing conversation about the pieces that. This group had concerns with, which is, you know, how does a parent get there? Why does a parent have to necessarily go to a teacher first? And if we don't, then it links us up with taking action. So that is a sub. A subgroup of negotiations for further action within the life of this contract.
Okay, so then it starts. Then the list starts to get a little more, or a little less, little less consistent, I would say. Um, so we have a couple that have to do with library access, library and kind of things. Redesign the library, how are we gonna frame that?
So.
Are we going?
I thought we were just.
Are we weighing in on each of these? I'm waiting to hear your response.
I wasn't, I didn't think that we were weighing in on them, but. I thought when we first started going down this. That we were going to decide if it was something that was within the purview of the school committee and if not where it would go. And to me, the middle high school library is more a school council issue.
No, because that's a budget issue, isn't it? It got eliminated from the budget and that's why now it's an issue because middle school people don't have access to. Take their books from the library. There's no librarian.
Yeah. I don't know if that's the only reason, this was well-covered territory last year. Was it not?
It was, I don't feel the answer has satisfied, satisfied anybody, but yes, I think it was.
It was covered, but the answer was not satisfactory.
But the, the way we left last year's budget discussion was that there was an open line item that we were going to try to address internally. Um, some of the issues surrounding.
So it was covered, but I don't think it was concluded.
It was put on hold, which is why it's on the list.
Yeah. Okay, so is it fair to say though that that's a budget conversation?
Yes. I would recommend that it is a, I would suggest that it is a program discussion to be advanced by the middle and high school principal joint. If they would like to revisit or propose using. Restaffing, reorganization, repurposing to redo their model of libraries that they need to advance that.
Instead of hiring a librarian.
No. Have not requested a librarian. They cover it with a T A. Of having. And there's a misalignment between their perspective of whether it's working and a group of parents who do not feel that it's working. I'm not taking a position on whether I agree with either. But that is where the disconnect lies. It's not strictly a budget situation. This went out, this is, we have not had a librarian here and moved from a library to a learning commons model. I think it was twenty fifteen. So it wasn't necessarily a budget related situation.
So maybe we could put this just, maybe we could put this in the category of continuing concerns. That, that people on the committee might have, but. Continuing concerns. That some.
I would say continuing community concerns because I don't know this.
Just regular concerns.
Right, I mean, starting continuing.
Remind everyone that this has been raised at least on separate, um, calls by, by other community members.
Right, there's, moving on then, there's several here that have to do with transparency on class size, revisiting the class size and F D E. Analysis and that, you know, next steps on that.
What are, what are we still waiting, just?
We had a whole conversation at the end of last year whether or not we wanted to pursue that analysis in a little more detail to understand. Just how that's working and whether or not we set a policy for it.
Is that something we still care about as a, so I mean, can we ask that question at this point?
What do you mean that we need more? I mean, I feel like we beat the class size horse over and over again.
Or do you mean whether for us to decide together what we would like to see the class size expectations to be?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, to, to.
Did we want to follow up on that conversation that started last year to, to decide whether or not to take any action on?
I think that a more.
You mean change?
Thinking about that would be, I believe that we have in the school committee policy already an old recommended class size. Is, am I imagining this?
It's not, it's not a formal policy. It's an old document that gives a policy range.
So the question is, is this the time to take that back up or is this not the time to take that back up? That's a question for us. We don't.
Right. Okay, so then moving on, another, uh, one here has to do with advancing performing arts.
That says advancing meaning.
To me, that one.
Our strategic plan.
To me, that one is really, really is a budget issue because we had a, there was a plan in place to do that. And that budget was not passed.
Uh, another one here is, uh, health wellness. Plan revisit, we've talked about that several times, particularly in the policy subcommittee.
And we have talked about kind of bringing back a, uh, health and wellness. Task force, but I don't know.
That's on deck for reboot this year.
So that's already planned to happen, so that's good. So they're already planning to do that.
Right, but don't we have some sort of role in that? Whether it be policy or.
You would be, we would have designees to the group.
Okay.
It's more of a district wide group, but there's, um, language around. Who sits on it?
Okay, another, uh, couple here around looking into corporate sponsorship or identifying alternative revenue sources.
I will go on a limb and say, I think that it is important that we, through the budget process. Have the conversations about where we can increase revenue and, and. And, um, I, I think that. On that, a, a look at the fee structure, um, is gonna be important because you have to engage with the community on all of this. But I would also suggest that it's not going to solve the problem and therefore I don't think that we need to. Set like a task force to doing it.
I think that could be a finance subcommittee, Joe.
I agree. I don't think it's going to solve the problem. I think that we have a responsibility to our community though to. Make sure that they understand the number of options that have been explored and.
And it's been asked many times, so I think.
So this falls in the budget and communication.
Yeah, and also some analysis done by the, like, money supplement. If not the whole committee.
And you're gonna need, you're gonna want to look at your policies because you have some policies that. Talk about not utilizing advertising and corporate. For school children or when it's, or around or during the day and advertising not being. So you might have to do some.
Start there anyway. They would need to start with policy anyway.
Not remembering.
May not need to start, but may have implications for policy. Um, and then there are several here that are about, um, this is budget related, but more about kind of budget presentation, communicating assumptions. Relation to, you know, kind of program. Uh, narrative and the things, that's, that's kind of been the communications bucket in a sense. Which we already have identified. All right, then there's a set of singleton things. One is around formality and extending extra language options. One is around A I, thinking about how it impacts, uh, program and, uh, whether or not we need to be thinking about that from our perspective. Another, actually that came out of the policy subcommittee, but just, and, and our work, and we did the, um. Uh, ninth grade civics project adjusting our graduation requirement policy, so. Uh, and the flag policy, uh, this is another policy subcommittee I am. Um, another singleton here is, what I'm, I may need to explain a little bit, admin restructuring. I would add a holdover.
Uh, you know what? That, that I don't even really, didn't intend anything specific by it. I know it was a question that was asked repeatedly while we're in the middle of budget process. I mean, I, I think, um, you basically said we've done everything we can do. Um, I, I was trying to also the voice for what, what was being filed.
And I think there's, yeah, there's communication where the communication and budget goes together so closely that as we're moving forward with the budget, we're going to have to. Be able to help the community understand why we have the administration structure that we do and what's the, what the purpose is.
I think we can do a better job. I'd like to think we can do a better job with some of those questions that we've heard repeatedly this time around.
Yeah.
Figuring out how to.
It was also asked in collaboration by the income people.
All right, another singleton, and Erica, if you want to speak to this, school safety.
Um, that, you know, that was on there because there have been email rates that have been responded to, um, I put it on here.
But it has been.
Yes.
Okay.
Responded to.
Um, and then. I think the last thing, oh wait, no, one more, uh, two more, process surrounding attendance review.
Yeah, I don't think there's any.
Okay. And then the last one, um, what if any role do we have in the ongoing curriculum review this year? It's not on our calendar. I know it's referred to in the, in the dip and whatnot, but. Presumably there's at least a presentation to us, if not action.
It's highlighted in the, in the notes that we're in year two of the cycle, um, that, so this year we should have the K twelve curriculum spotlight for STEM humanities, world language and specials.
I think the curriculum review is different than the spotlight, I think.
Spotlight is probably the wrong word, but it is a overview of the K twelve curriculum, for the K twelve program, each of those areas.
And whether or not there's gonna be any recommended change to the curriculum.
Unless there is a substantial investment in program, the curriculum changes are briefed but not voted on.
Right, but maybe we would be made aware if there were changes.
By the end of the year on what, the work they're doing.
Okay, so that's what's called the spotlight here.
Yeah.
All right, unless I'm missing something that's.
In the timeline?
I have one on the front page, so, and this, I'm guessing somebody's gonna say that this is a, um, school issue, but to the extent that. Our strategic initiative is focused on project-based learning, the score project rooms. Out there as something I think we, we've talked about and kind of put a pin in at times. Um, and. I think we should just decide, is this something we're punting to school council or the high school? Is this something we should talk about as a group, as a, you know?
And I, and I would actually add to that, the, um, civics projects, it's kind of markers along the way. So I appreciate you reminding us of that.
And I.
I'm wondering if that.
Proved a couple of your things together, but if there's anything that you think is distinctly different, please speak up in your list.
I, I'm wondering if that conversation though about score and about the civics projects comes in the conversation about graduation requirements that, that. If that's something we're gonna take on as a group together to understand most fully.
Well, I guess I'd ask for clarification on what's the ask and then I would be tasking. Principals with the curriculum director to put together a. Report to school committee.
Yeah.
I think we, that's, that's why we need to figure out what the ask is, right? If there is.
I have, I have.
I think also what may help is that we, so I did, almost all of us, I think, met with Julie and with, um, Heather. So we were able to express our concerns to them and as they take this all into, they may come back to us with a presentation. This may be a non-issue. This may be something they're already working on.
Julie will do her hundred days, so to speak, or. Thereabouts, report out when she comes to program studies in January.
Okay.
And Heather is scheduled several different times, so whichever one hits the mid-year mark, she will do her hundred day or so report. Um, and that will be kind of what they've heard.
Okay.
So they may be able to cover it there.
Okay.
Um. Otherwise, we can have them tie it into the appropriate curriculum presentation to other school improvement. Updates and outlooks.
Okay, Anna, did I miss anything specific I feel is that is distinctly different?
I think the roles and responsibilities, I think it's part of the, the meetings. I think outside of meetings, I do think, um, we could clarify some things. Because I think previous year, last year, the chair, um, advised you to take down most of the staff, especially the chair. But how do we divide and conquer depends on what it is. Uh, and maybe it goes to the subcommittee, but you know, like men, uh, we mentioned last year about. Uh, maybe some people attend the school council or student council, whatever it is, um, like, or. Just outside of meeting, like the rules maybe more clearly be found.
So. Uh, so I can speak to that. The only things that are, there are the things that as chair I do outside the meeting are, I respond to emails. I respond to press requests. I attend the student advisory council once a month, not, not every month, but the months that it takes place. And, um, welcome the staff at that, at the breakfast. One thing we did miss last year though, and I think it was just too much is like group walkthroughs. We didn't, we didn't have a chance for like our whole committee to do a walkthrough of, of each school. Um, and that's something that, um.
Actually on my to-do list to get some dates from principals this week for a fall walk.
What about a wrap to the school council? Cause there's times where I feel like we kind of punt some issues back and forth on having seven multiple school councils. I felt the exact same way that it was often the case that people are like, that's not school council, that's school committee now here and I think it's school council and. If there might be the utility in having somebody.
Is that something that's been done in the past?
We've never done it here. I don't know that you can't do it. I would just suggest that it gets really well defined what the purpose and the role is. Is it observer? Is it participant? Just so everybody knows.
Right.
What the role of the school council is.
Would it be?
What the role of the liaison is.
How big of an ask would it be to have the, a principal or. An appointed school council member just to send us a summary of their meeting every two minutes, a meeting?
They do minutes. They're posted public meetings. I'm not a poster. I think we just, if we're gonna do it, we just need to define it clear and it should be. Every school council has a liaison that goes reliably and it doesn't feel like one school council is being monitored versus.
Yeah, I like Kate's idea, just minutes, I. There are a couple of, I took the minutes, but I didn't publish.
Principal probably did.
They post their meetings. I will, we, we talked about that, um, they should be coming out. We put together kind of a. I can, let me give the update on this next time. Finish your business, but we, we came up with some common structures for the school council elections, which should be happening over the next month.
I want to be mindful of time and I don't want to start a huge discussion, but I do want to note that as we're talking about dividing these up into buckets. I feel like there is a category of things that don't fit into any bucket and that a lot of them are curriculum centric. And a lot of other school committees have a curriculum subcommittee. We do not. Period. And I'm just putting that out there. I don't know if that's, I don't know where that conversation goes, but I feel like. It's not productive for our whole group to talk about. These things necessarily, but that it, they all fit within that, that umbrella.
I didn't know that most, that a lot of school committees have that, but that seems very logical.
And I think when we get to subcommittees, I will recommend that we either add to one of our existing ones or create a new one, depending on what we're up for, that would focus on educational program. And I'll physically not use the word curriculum because I don't want to talk about teacher materials and, you know, with students, we're talking about the, the broader educational program.
Okay, so.
Could, could I add an ask? And you don't have to do anything with this.
Yes.
I'm just. It sounds like we're going in a direction where. Subcommittees used to be working groups. Then to comply with open meeting law, they became subcommittees. But now they're starting to take on, we don't have definitions of them and what their roles and responsibilities are, what they do and they don't do. So I am all for making them more robust, but I think it would be helpful not only to this group, but groups in the future to have some clearly defined roles, responsibilities. Meetings, charges, because you're also creating, I mean. Are we comparing ourselves to? Rockton, it's in my head from the, probably a bad choice, but schools the size of Rockton, Wellesley, Concord, Carlisle, are we comparing our schools? Ourself to schools the size of Ipswich, Georgetown, Rothport, because we're going to run into a bandwidth problem. I like work, like lots of work, but now we're gonna be up to four or five subcommittees. Of which I sit on every one of them, organize the agenda of, for them and then plug in one and two hour meetings. meetings and all of the lead-up prep time with all of the other people who have to come to the meeting. So I think they're purposeful. I think it's also.
We have directors.
There are still people online, Chris, and they are crunching those numbers and they are not.
And I don't think that's necessarily even the answer, but there's we just have to be conscious of it, just like reporting is a great idea, but we're built, we're not built for the Wellesley-sized infrastruc-, you know, administrative structure and production level. We're built for Rockport Georgetown.
We're shrinking everything and expanding ourselves currently.
Yes. So when we went to the training, um, they said that the, all the subcommittees needs to have minutes and it needs to be public.
Right.
It's not a working, it's actually a subcommittee.
I, we know. In all honesty, she can't, Amy can't keep up. I mean, her job, if she attends one subcommittee meeting every other week, it's gonna be five to 10 hours plus the meeting in this product, it's just too much, we're, we're behind in everything.
So maybe let's look at subcommittees right now. We're here, we're at it, okay? So negotiations has a lot of work this year. They're good, and those meetings are three, four-hour meetings at a time. That's an enormous amount of work. We've put a lot of stuff on the, the policy list, although I would argue that some of that can be put off, the reserve policy, I think is a have-to, but some of the policy stuff can sit. Maybe not, but it's there. Um, facilities doesn't meet very often, and there's, there's nothing on here, but.
But it's going to.
It's going to.
Yeah, that's gonna emerge this year.
That's gonna emerge as a as a.
High-frequency meeting.
Yes.
Because, uh, it's a six element here.
It's gonna start this year.
Well, the evaluation process.
It's not just that, it's.
If it doesn't get accepted, managing the capital plan and all of the investments will become key work of that group.
Yes. So either way.
That group is.
That's becoming.
And should we be successful, then you're going to now add a new group, which is a building committee.
Right.
Which is another
Yeah.
It's a heavy meeting schedule in the beginning with a lot of additional responsibilities.
Yeah. And then there's the finance subcommittee. I'm going to just put my thoughts out there. I do not think we should have separate finance subcommittee meetings at this time. I think that we need to do that work as a group altogether, and if we're going to task off a lot of this work to subcommittees to then report out on, that frees up the space for us to work through budget and understanding the finance part of this together. What was spent the bulk of last year doing was learning. And that learning would be best suited for all seven of us and, and frankly for the public. So it is my opinion that we suspend the finance subcommittee for now as a separate subcommittee. It's not like we meet and then make recommendations about, down the line, perhaps we can get to that, but that's not what we functionally used it for, and I think that given the budget situation we have right now, we all need to be involved.
And the finance, to me, the a lot of the work that is ahead has to do with me, um, right now it's afternoon in Boston, well, no, sorry, it's eight fifteen, I go one more minute left, didn't I? That these joint meetings with our town, the collaborative. What do you call the?
Collaboration.
Your, your club?
Collaboration.
Collaboration. The collaboration group. To me, it feels as though the finance subcommittee is the collaboration, our reps on the collaboration.
Group.
So that, that's up for, that's how it has served last year. However, I will say this, that's not necessarily the case. We could have a finance, a finance subcommittee separate from the chairperson and vice chairperson working through collaboration group. That's, that's entirely up to the group. But we did meet separately from that last year.
Right, I know.
So, yeah.
But it sounds like the collaboration group is going to be meeting more frequently and that maybe the resources are better spent with the collaboration group or than those people we're putting in that time.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm not seeing value in having extra meetings as, that's, that's just my opinion. I'm just putting it out there. That makes sense to me.
I would agree too. Can I ask one clarification question, which is a terminology question, I think, but the underlying rationale for why it's called a finance committee rather than a budget committee? Cause my understanding is the towns due to financing, we develop the school budget. In other words, it's a, it's a matter of looking in versus looking out.
They use.
I think both. School committee, this is just, I'm not picking, but the school committee does not develop a school budget. You review and approve top one. That's why it's not the budget committee.
I'm not, I'm not saying we develop, I'm saying that, you know, we're working collaborative with you to think about the implications and the communication, that kind of.
I would, I would just say to that, my money guy answer to that is budget is an appropriation and sometimes multi-year. Uh, things like reserves, capital uses, those things are all financing, how, how, whether we should bond, how we should bond, how we might think about that, granted, that all goes back to the towns to some extent. Those are all things I think go beyond just budget into finance, but it's nomenclature, you can call it whatever you want.
That's a good point, thank you.
Probably all go, go back to defining.
I, I should, I should circle that, like.
Can I, because we're saying, you're saying the same things and just using different words, or a certain phrase triggers a certain thought process, so.
Yep.
What we're gonna.
Can I just clarify your thinking on this? Is your, am I correct in thinking that your reasoning is that the budget work is so important and so central to our next year, that it is the work of everyone rather than being the work of one subcommittee?
Yes. But we, that this is
Right.
The entire.
That everybody should be putting in the time and the.
Yes. That is my.
For what it's worth, I'd offer, that's been a historic perspective on most topics and why you have the items on your standing agenda that you have. But very little was done in subcommittee, and they were, subcommittees were evolved into subcommittees when the open meeting law changed, but really were for the wordsmithing, thorny things like on policy or the negotiation piece when it was just too much and couldn't be done here. But everything else, because we're so small, because we represent two communities, if we're going to present on the school improvement plan, the whole of the group needs to hear and the whole of the community needs to hear. That's a change in philosophy. So be it, but very little happened in subcommittee prior. They were infrequent and as needed, as opposed to being this really, the underpinning.
And I'm wondering if some of these things that we're saying, you know, that might work best in a subcommittee, if, if maybe, you know, I'm thinking of like the roles and charges of, of a subcommittee, especially if we're thinking about adding one. That it might be nice to just have a working group of two people who go research what other districts are doing and how they structure this and then, but if we call it, if we say that's the policy subcommittee taking that on, then that has implications for Pam and Avi's time, rather than our time and then reporting that. So I'm saying that, I guess what I'm saying is some of these things that look like we could say, well, you know, such and such subcommittee should do that, we could do as tasks, if we could just say by assignment, you know? These two people are going to go do that thing and then let us know what they find. We did that for something last year, what was it? We did it for something.
So, um, we're making an assumption, which I'm not sure is true, and that is that Pam and Avi have to be the organizer and at every subcommittee meeting? Does that have to be, or can we, I mean, these are our subcommittees, can't we run them and take our minutes and just develop the agendas? Why do we have to put that on Pam and Avi?
I don't think we have to put that on Pam and Avi. I would say that we might want to be cautious about running our subcommittees separately from them though, because they're gonna need to know what, I mean.
But I'm not, I'm not saying they shouldn't participate, and what I'm saying is why do we assume that we have to put the work on them? Why can't we?
I'm talking about physical hours of meeting. I'm not necessarily talking about putting the work. So you're suggesting that they just don't need to come to the subcommittee meetings?
No, I'm suggesting that we can set our agendas, we can take minutes, you know, we can, uh, coordinate with Pam and Avi for who needs to be there, what kind of prep needs to be done. If there's just a research task, they don't need to be there. If it's a, you know, hey, this is, this is got implications for the school, they need to be, they need to be there, let's, you know, make sure they're there. But, you know, we can be a little more flexible rather than just assuming the work is all on them.
I want to do some research about how other district function of. I'm assuming I need to be there because I don't know of subcommittees that meet without physical attendance, but I'm happy to dig into it, find out.
Well, maybe you don't have to be the one who digs into it.
Well, you kind of do on that one, actually, yeah. I'm not sure if I missed the segue between the conversation about the finance committee and how, now we're now talking about Pam and Avi's.
And, right. The segue was that I was just suggesting that some of these things, like for instance, um, you know, looking at the subcommittee roles and things like that, we're gonna have to do some research on that. Rather than saying, okay, this falls in the policy subcommittee bucket, and then we have to wait for a policy subcommittee meeting to take place, and that puts more on them. We could do some of these things by way of assignment and say, you know, these two people are going to go research this and then let us know what we find out, and we can build that time back into our agenda so that we know, but that's a working group, and I think that's what that's how some of this had started, but it's just become much more formal.
I'm fine with that.
It, it's not it's just a thought for some of these things that we care about trying to fit everything in.
And I'm not sure if anybody said fit everything in. I thought, at some point, we've got to prioritize and drop some of these, right? I mean, like that, not to pick on you, but the AI thing probably can wait, right? You know, so I'm not saying that everything on the list has the same.
He's gonna be printing off the same, same English paper.
That's right.
I think you're gonna. I feel horrible, but I'm gonna say, I think it really is gonna come back to clarifying roles responsibilities, like we, so I want to know, want you to know, we've heard the AI concern. It's bubbling in a lot of different sectors, and it's an ongoing conversation. There's gonna be a book study group on it. I'm sure you'll hear reporting out about it over the year. So sometimes you just need to put things on my radar screen and let us take it and go do what we do.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna hear about it through the year, um, in both formal and informal ways. So I, I think it's the roles and responsibilities clarification that's gonna help you structure your, your subcommittees. Gonna help you structure your budget work. We just might need a facilitator to get through it.
Can we make, and I am
Because our.
I'm anxious because I think that our deliverable from this meeting is our subcommittees and.
So what about this? What if we, and we don't have to prioritize this entire list tonight, what if we pick a couple of things right now and say, this is the things that we don't have to, we don't have to know that everything fits in the entire year. We can work through this in chunks. We can, we can say right now, the top-line priorities for our, for us are a communication plan.
And, let's just take a step back. So there's one thing that we know we need to have, we need to have a negotiation subcommittee, right? So let's just vote on that right now.
I want to do that, but I guess what I'm saying is.
Let's just do it right now.
The reason why not is because what I'm saying is there are, but let me finish my sentence. What I'm saying is, we could, we could say, these top two things are what the policy subcommittee is going to take on, so we have at least an idea. We know what negotiations is doing, we know what policy is doing next, we know what facilities is gonna be, and then we vote on who sits on these things. I'm just saying, let's put.
I don't, I don't care.
Okay.
I mean, it's like, I, I don't know, I think we're all capable of doing any of these roles, basically. So I don't really care what the minutia is in it. I trust everyone here that they, you know, care about their roles here, what they're doing here, we're all spending our time here, right? So I don't care what we're doing, it doesn't affect who I vote for for any of these things. I just want to get this done.
While we are thinking about who goes into what subcommittee, I will recommend that, that's not only look at the candidate. Um, let's also look at everybody's professional experience or personal experience. Like, for example, if we have a program committee, I am not gonna be on it because I know nothing about it. Uh, but if there are some like negotiation, maybe some other people are better at this and have better lens of it. So I think some people do have some different skill sets, though it's not like everybody can do everything. Like I, there are some things I can do.
So shall we just start with negotiations then?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, so here's what I would put forward. We have two people who've been doing the negotiation subcommittee. Are you both willing to do that? Continue?
I, I need to know if they're willing. I am. Pam has stepped out, and I did tell her that all of the dates that were thrown out are Tuesdays, and half of my Tuesdays are already taken by school committee, and I coach soccer on Tuesdays. So if the negotiations committee is going to be another Tuesday commitment, I cannot do that with my other obligations.
Okay. So let's wait till Pam gets back in the room and let her comment on your Tuesday schedule, because that will make an implication for the other two Essex reps.
So is this a time to make a motion for an educational program submitting?
Can we start with just what we have?
Okay.
On the negotiation, uh, do you think as attorney helps for you to be on the negotiation?
No. We haven't, so because we bring an attorney.
I mean, I, I actually, I do think, and if, not me, I think an attorney could, could be useful in the role, but I actually think their experience is more useful than background. Okay. So as long as Pam says that you're.
But it is not, but that's not gonna be a problem.
So it's not gonna be the remainder of your Tuesdays. Oh, there she is. I, I'm more interested in interest, frankly, who's interested. There's no requirement for.
More interesting than that too, yeah.
I'm, I'm interested in what people are interested in serving in here.
I mean, for me, I'd be interested in like the building and the facilities, because, you know, I, I have a real estate development background, I were also working finance. So, you know, that's where my background lies.
John is interested in the facility subcommittee. Is there any other Manchester representative who is interested in facility subcommittee?
You mean, I've never done that.
No, I'm asking if there's any other Manchester reps who want to be on the facility subcommittee.
But we only have one, right?
Right, so I'm breaking up. Going to.
Erica, you want to do the facilities? No, you're good, Anna, you're good. I'm good.
All right, so John's happy on facilities. Uh, we can hold off on the, on the Essex for, for, well.
Do you want to continue?
Um, I, I think I want to see where the rest of this falls first. I think that's important at the moment. All right, Pam, we had, we needed you for, to, to solidify negotiations.
Negotiations continues to be a Tuesday commitment that I cannot make that work.
We'll make it a Thursday. That's great.
I mean, all of the dates were Tuesdays. It was Tuesday, Tuesday, like they were all Tuesdays. Whereas we used to do Wednesdays.
Was the date Tuesday, did I write Tuesday and put the date of Thursday?
I don't know.
I'd have been one Thursday, but it was pretty consistent.
Only because that's what I had open on my calendar right now. We will move to Thursday.
For me with calendars, I don't, the only, I have every other Tuesday open and that's it. I have no other nights with coaching, like the other teams that I do and things like that. So for me.
So you're saying you can sleep at Tuesdays.
Right. It's, but I actually don't want to do that either, because I'd like to spend some time with my family over the next like eight weeks, so. So I, I'm, and I think you might be preferable to this too, but it's like rotates a little bit. We don't keep like a Wednesday, like get a schedule upfront and.
So can we do this offline?
Yes.
Are you guys definitely it? Okay.
Yeah, and if, you know what, and the bottom line is if something happens and you can't do, we can get someone else to come in.
Yeah, I think the, the, go. The takeaway is that it is a heavy time commitment.
Right.
And so it has to work within our schedules, and we have agreed. We're willing to try to make that happen, but we're, we also want to be transparent about.
I think we're gonna challenge the schedule the whole year, given the group. Um, so we're just gonna, I don't think it's gonna what, what it is in the fall is likely what it will, not what, it will be in the winter and in the spring. The days, it's gonna keep moving around.
Cool.
Erica, oh, sorry, we can talk after.
Yeah, and it's only for the next eight weeks that I have a mission, so.
And I think.
And all my coaching goes away.
It might be a, because there's so much writing and language, there's probably going to be some work.
Oh, suckers.
Let's take this offline.
Oh my gosh.
Okay, so.
Of workers.
All right, so we've got a negotiations settled. We have policy facilities, let's, let's, um, I, I would like to, um, I'm gonna do this by way of motion rather than just by conversation to see where it goes. I will make a motion that we suspend the finance subcommittee. Temporarily, uh, so that we are all doing the same thing. I don't care how you word that.
So that we are all part of.
We are all of the budget. Yes, that we are all part of the budget and finance work that needs to be done this year.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Before we vote? Okay, all in favor? Any post? Okay, so that.
Do we then change this to? Do we then change this to? Like a collaboration representation or some sort of?
On the agenda, we'll, yeah, we can report that out in the, um, we can report it out in the chairperson's report. Or just have a collaboration report.
Like a collaboration group, working group, whatever.
Yeah, we're serving.
The assumption here is that our representatives for the collaboration group are the chair and vice chair.
Right.
It doesn't have to be.
Who also happens to be the former.
I just.
I think it does need to be.
Finance subcommittee. Cause you might change your minds as the year goes on about some little thing that needs to get addressed and just keep it that you're not meeting except for.
Then that's, then that's what we'll say. I would like to move that we are not meeting. I, here's what I can't do again.
You can suspend and put it back.
Yeah, we can put it back at any other time, but if, if we don't have this as a, like as a formal thing right now, what we're going to hear from other people's point of view of finance. We accept the meeting. Why isn't your finance subcommittee taking this up and studying this and this? Cause I got it all last year. So I feel like with what we're doing, I want to be real clear that either there's a finance subcommittee meeting separately. Or there's not. And we can start it again as soon as we need to, but I, based on how.
We came out of the calendars and tell you for almost complete certainty. The finance subcommittee never met except for collaboration. There was something like bonding.
On the website, people like, oh.
Last year we did though.
Other than last year, like the history of the group has not been meet every other.
Right.
None of them have acted like that. It's been as needed. And it's just there to stand up if there's something that. That needs some technical.
We can always have.
However, we need to say it.
We did just.
Temporary, temporarily stop meetings.
Policy.
So we have policy, facilities and Jake.
So at this point, I, I think it's worth a short conversation whether or not we want to support educational policy committee or do like a policy slash educational program.
So can we do this by way of motion though, so that we can get this?
I, I remember that we, uh, that we amend the policy subcommittee and create a policy programming.
Discussion.
What do you mean, amend the policy?
I feel, I don't know why, and I can't. It feels strange to me to add. Another subcommittee, and I know that I'm the one who brought it up, but it feels strange to do it this like without sort of some like research into what do these committees do in other districts? Who do they work with? Like, what is the? That's what I'm looking for. I almost feel like there's like a working group that then creates the goal for that subcommittee and then that subcommittee can be formed because now it has a goal to work towards.
So what I appreciate about doing the merge subcommittee is that that gives us a little flexibility, right? It's not entirely new subcommittee with just that focus. Right? And it gives us a little time to kind of figure that out since all of them need a charge and a focus. So I think it, it is a good step is to keep this as its policy slash educational program subcommittee. So that we're not creating a whole new one right now and avoiding that at the moment.
I'm gonna. My, my thought is that is related, but slightly different. That if we're going to have that, that it, that policy has enough to be getting on with anyway. And that if we are going to do that, that it should be a separate thing and that it should have a really clear thing. I would be more in favor of setting a task, putting this near the top of the priority list, the communication plan and figuring out what it is we're looking for along with roles and responsibilities. I would be more in favor of having, um, a working group of two people. Do a bunch of research, look at what the other districts are doing, say what, say what it is and potentially come up with mapping out the roles and, and, um, charges of each of our subcommittees. Then bring it to us.
It's two people that are going to get to do that.
I have no idea.
Because you either are going to get us the two remaining people, like we either, I think we're either going to merge these two subcommittees and have that subcommittee basically be in charge of figuring out.
No.
Or, or, or we're not going to get two, two people who already have a subcommittee to volunteer to also be working here.
I don't, I don't.
To me, that I, I actually would be really interested in that working group because it's within my professional realm and because it's something that can be done on, like research is, I'm, I'm good with research. I sit up late on my computer every night. Normally it's not very productive, but if you give me a goal, it will be productive, right? It's like. When I'm not. Time bound by meetings and that sort of thing is.
So I.
Okay, so the motion is on the table for a merged.
For a merged.
Merge the policy and the program.
Merge policy and educational programs.
Communications. Cause it's policy and communications.
Right.
But it hasn't said that in ages.
Never said that.
It did, it, it did a couple of years back. This is.
Yeah, I guess all in that, I don't.
Yeah.
If you guys make your decisions, I just need some clarity on what all of these groups.
That's what we're trying to do. We're getting there.
Charged with functioning because we don't. There aren't motions, there aren't votes. If they're just working groups, what's, what's the work?
Right. Here's where, where my head is right now is I think we need to nail down a negotiations of policy and a facility subcommittee to actually do the work that we already know those groups do. And then separately.
We take the vote?
Yeah, but this is my.
This is your.
This is my version of the discussion, which is to set two people to looking at what the other districts are doing and why, and come up with a, a plan for, a proposal for adding a subcommittee to be brought forth. That's what it would take for me to support an additional subcommittee. Does anyone else have discussion before the vote? Yes.
Uh, just number wise. So if we get rid of finance, uh, committee, yeah. So we have three subcommittees to each. So there will be one person that will be on the any subcommittee.
Okay.
We can't have three if there's not a forum.
But you said that we have to have like one.
The finance subcommittee is now the collaborative, the collaboration.
Yeah.
Representatives.
Yeah. Also, I would say it's not that we can't, it's that on certain things like, for instance, negotiations. Equal representation seems more important to me than on a policy subcommittee where if we have three, we're still bringing it all back here for the group altogether. And the, the, to me, that makes a difference. I don't.
But like facility, for example, does it need to be as equal representation messaging?
I feel like politically it might if it comes down, the, the new Essex on three and all.
So which one is okay to have three then?
If we need everyone to be seated on that, I think policy is fine to have three. That's personally just my little opinion.
Then it might be okay to combine the two. It is going to be, that's the one that got twenty five people. Right?
Good. Going to urge you all to really think about the purpose of your groups, how you want them structured. What is? What is the work that you want them to do? Cause I get what we're, I understand you're trying to match with interests, but if you look at some subcommittee functions, they function as junior school committees. With minutes, motions, decisions. We're not structured that way. So what's the work that we're going to do? Like negotiation, crystal clear what happens there.
Yeah.
Right? There's a roadmap. Finance. It has a history roadmap. It could be something different in the future. If you want to assign it the work of vouchers and things like that. Don't want to revisit that right now. Policy has really just been to be the writing group, the review and writing and propose. But if we're setting up, we're really tasking people with work and now creating more work for more members of the administrative team. We need some clarity on how these things are going to function and what the intended outcomes are for the end of the year. So I would ask that maybe we engage in some of that work before we just start seeding groups. And now we've got three, three people on one and it should be that, that there's just, there's a lack of clarity around what the, what the new expectations are for these groups.
Can I take what you just said and put it in one? I think that we can, I think we can hit both. Let's figure out who's going to be on these three subcommittees. If there's one, one that doesn't have three, I don't need to be on a subcommittee. I'm going to know what you're all doing. I'm, there's, I'm going to, I'm okay with that. But. Then we can let those groups come together to determine what is their scope. I mean, you're going to be working with each of them anyway and then come up with, uh.
I think the committee needs to decide the scope of work that your subcommittees are doing. It has to be a charge to those groups. So you can't have three different committees or three different functioning rules and sets of this.
I guess a point of clarification. So Pam, in, in concept, I completely agree with you. It is not my understanding, however, that subcommittees ever take votes and make decisions. They are not a quorum of the school committee and everything that they do has to come back to the school committee. Essentially, they can make recommendations and drafts of things, but.
Depends how you set up the charge of your sub, of your subcommittees.
And if we ever had a.
We haven't.
Yeah. And I don't think.
Why are you opening that can of worms?
I don't think anybody's recommending.
We're starting to go down delegating of responsibilities of school committee to these groups as we change.
I don't think we were.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not our intent or my intent at least.
I would propose that the first task of each subcommittee is to determine their priorities for.
For what?
For the year?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think. And to bring those back to our next school committee meeting or our maybe two school committee meetings right now.
And I want to be clear because I, I think Jake and I are on the same page that we're talking about these still functioning as, they might make recommendations for the committee to take a vote on, but that nothing that happens in the subcommittee is binding in that same way. Or we're all on the same understanding of that.
And I will also clarify, and I misunderstood, when I saw representation on the facilities. I didn't mean that it needed to be the same number of people. I just meant that there needed to be somebody from each panel.
All right. So. I'll tell you, I have served on, uh, policy. I have served on facility. I'm happy to continue serving on facility subcommittee, but I don't mind if, if I need to not. Kate, your plate is probably full. Jake, where do you, where are your interests?
Oh, I'm sorry. Would be on the policy slash educational program.
So we're currently voting on whether to add an addition, so to merge educational program with policy. Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
Four.
Okay. That has passed.
So who's interested?
Two. I mean, I, I think it's the only one left for one. So there's that. Um, but I also served on it last year. So I will be happy to unless somebody else really wants to and, and I'll be happy to do whatever else needs.
Since we're down to three, because we still haven't, we've done.
I.
Voted on. Need to vote on this? I forget. Yes, we need to vote on it.
We need to vote on some.
Teresa, I think that you need to be on the facilities because.
Because of the.
Yeah.
I, so wait, so, uh, you guys say that you will be interested.
We're just taking a list of interest right now, then we'll vote on it all.
Can I also be interested if we are two memorial people? I mean, uh.
Yeah.
Interested people.
I think so.
Okay.
I don't really get the equality thing anyways, to be honest with you.
I do in some, in, in some circumstances.
But one town, one district, I don't know about one town. Yeah. I don't know. I guess.
So how, what do you want to call the policy slash education program committee?
Or maybe I should say.
Education program.
PPE. Why education program?
PE.
Yes.
The pet. Policy, education. Okay. So right now, what we have is Kate and Chris for negotiation, policy with Erica, Jake and policy, the pep. Erica, Jake and Anna, facilities, John and I. We are suspending the finance subcommittee meetings for now. Anna and I will continue to serve as representatives to the collaboration group as chair and vice chair. Is that according? I move that, what I just said.
Her second.
Second.
Yeah. All in favor. So that being the case. That being the case, the next step will be though, to see, I mean, how are, how are we going to define the, I mean, and structure this? So maybe between now and September nineteenth. We could, could we ask you to come up with a calendar of what's reasonable for you to incorporate for subcommittee meetings?
What, what us?
No.
I think the subcommittee needs to prioritize its list and draft a chart, right?
But if.
Yeah.
If we're going to have them be part of that.
But you don't need to be in all the meetings.
Yes, I do.
She does.
Because all of these things are related to managerial work that needs to be done and driven. These, I mean, if you want to have independent groups. We're, we're going in a very new direction.
There, there's, there's a difference between going and researching and seeing what other people do and bringing it back for all of us to discuss versus having subcommittee meetings where we don't have our superintendent. And that's not good practice for us.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll look into it. I'll research.
I think what people have been responding to is, um, when we started this conversation, you mentioned how many hours of your time it will take between not only meeting with the subcommittees, but drafting agendas and dealing with minutes and all that. So I think, I think all of them. I, I think the feedback you're hearing about you not needing to be involved isn't because people.
Oh, I take offense to this.
It's trying to think if there's a practical way to limit how much we're asking of you.
And I.
And still have you involved with what.
Appreciate that. I'm just still a little unclear about, I mean, I know what we need to do in terms of our deliverables of what I thought was coming out of policy, which was joint labor management group, which I think could be time consuming if we can get it off the ground. I don't know in the reserve policy. So that was supposed to be a joint effort with the finance subcommittee. So we haven't crossed that bridge yet. But I'm, I'm open. I just need, I'm not understanding what the function is and what our intended purpose is and what we want to do.
I think it's going to come. So.
All right.
On that one in particular, I think at the first meeting, that's the goal.
But I'm going to push back again and say the committee needs to decide what the charge of the subgroup is, not the interested subgroup.
But the way we're.
But I think, yeah, that's what I was.
Bring it back. We will propose a.
We're not good at working it out as a group.
But you need to get better at it. You really need to all get better at this because we are spinning. We've been spinning for an hour and a half. And I'm glad that we've resolved who's going to be on what group, but we really don't even have a lineup of the work or the work isn't going to align what people on the group want to do versus what they need to do. That's my biggest concern is we have a long list of things that we have to attend to this year, but they're not necessarily what we want to do.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to be out, completely out of character and be optimistic on this. It is not in my nature to be the optimist.
Okay.
However, I do think that with this one in particular. You're, you're going to need to meet as a policy and, and educational program subcommittee, and you're going to lay out all of the have tos. And you're going to, you're going to come with the other parts of this and you're going to look together and it will be more productive to do with a small group. And then let us know.
And my understanding is the whole reason that we just went through the list that they put together as well as the things that were that have to list is that we, we now have this list so that hopefully we can sit down and have a productive discussion. Um, of how those things fit together and propose in order to the rest of the group.
Okay. It is unrelated, so.
Oh, I was just gonna say, can we come to the October third meeting with those? Because we already have a shortened one hour meeting on the nineteenth. And it's going to be difficult for these subcommittees to get together in the next two weeks.
I, I think actually it's going to depend on, on a lot on Pam's schedule too. So yeah, I, I don't think we need to say what date it is. I think you guys can let us know when.
Okay.
When you're ready. Yeah.
Um. Should we go back to what we talked about before about the agendas, like should it all be in a package? Otherwise postpone it to the next meeting.
I don't think we can discuss that. I don't know that we have the bandwidth for that. And I think next meeting is going to be an abbreviated meeting with a full all boards meeting afterwards. So it's going to be as minimal as we can. The, I mean, the thing that's on the agenda for it is superintendent goals. And. So that's going to take.
We don't have school committee codes yet.
We do. We have standing goals.
We're going to roll those. Are you rolling those forward?
They're in effect until we.
Until we decide otherwise. Kind of like the protocols. And yes, they will need some tweaking, but there's, I mean, the bulk of what's there is pretty.
When are we supposed to just bring in a review?
I've got that. Can we wait till we get to, um, school committee comment? Well, we can put it in the, in the conversation now since we're talking about the work we have to do. I have the email from Pam. I've had it for a little while with all of the resources, um, MASC's resources and, and the forms and everything. So the way this works, John, you actually won't have to do this because it will be Matt who, who fills out. because it will be Matt who, who fills out, um, the review. So we will all get the review, um, document. We have, um, all of her end of year updates from the, uh, the state meeting. We have all of the information already in our, in our possession to do it. So each of us individually will fill out the document that is her review. There's a rubric attached. There's all of, everything is attached there. Then those are sent to me and Pam. So each individual person will send that document to me and to Pam. She will get to see all of them, but I will compile all of the input into a final one that becomes the official and that gets written.
But is it official due date supposedly? Now we need to.
We're well past it. It was May by contract, but Pam has generously, um, extended that repeatedly and we've, it's, we've been talking about it for months and months and months.
It's mutual agreement and the agreement was the summer, um, but so you've had stuff since the summer.
We've had stuff. So, so now that we've talked about it in a meeting, I will send out that email. If you have questions about it, you're welcome to reach out. But that's so.
Thank you.
As soon as you can.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay.
So can I, um.
We.
One, one quick thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I won't be here on the nineteenth, so I will do the task.
Okay.
Um, but I would also, the MASC had a good session back in June on this process and writing goals and whatnot. And, and it may be in the list of resources that you'll send out. Uh, but I found it very helpful particularly to distinguish between outputs and outcomes, kind of the things that are developed versus the impact. And I think that'll be a, an important point for us to look at as we think about the next round.
Okay. Closing continued business. It doesn't feel like, like really good and like, oh, look, we did a thing, but we did do a thing and that was, um, I think we actually accomplished more than we might realize because that's, that's conversations that have been meaning to take place for months and needing to take place for months and months and months. Um, and sometimes it's uncomfortable. School committee comment. So I talked about the evaluation and the walkthroughs. That's all I have for con. Anyone else have comment?
I'll just say real quickly, if you haven't yet looked at the, um, Boston University most recent CTE study, the, um, uh, chronic traumatic encephalopathy, if I get that right, um, which is the impact of small hits, not necessarily concussions, but they did a recent study on young athletes, uh, teenagers, college students who died by the age of thirty. Uh, it's pretty sobering and maybe worth our or staff consideration at some point. So, you know, there's nothing really conclusive that they only have like a hundred and fifty brains to look at. But the prevalence of CTE in young athletes is pretty sobering.
All sports?
Uh, primarily, um, you know, more contact sports like hockey, soccer and football.
Thank you.
Another comment is, uh, I did all the school thing. I did analysis on all the different things. So we, I can share it in our policy meeting. I can share it on next time.
If that's just information, you can just send it by email to everyone. So we all have it. That would be nice. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to stress, I guess, real quick again, um, we need to figure out a way as a committee in a group to really come together on what we want to, how we want to approach this year. And we need to decide as a group what we're going to be doing with this year's budget. However, you know, and as a group, like we all need to be in this together instead of what sometimes seems to be a little, uh, a lot of different opinions about what's important, what, what's maybe not important, what's important to one person about how our approach, we need to. When, uh, things, when difficult, uh, decisions like this need to be made, we need to debate a lot of this, which we've been doing, I think for the past year, which has been great, but then there is a time to come together and actually get something done, whatever we decide as a committee that's. That's it.
And I would suggest on that, that after our all boards meeting on the nineteenth, you'll get this when you get the summary from the collaboration group. Um, that after that, we need to set some time in the agenda, some actual time to discuss exactly that all to, to decompress from that all boards meeting in our October third, if we can, um, and see where we're all at with that and come to some ideas and understanding of what the potential outcomes are and what we're going to start getting behind.
Sure.
So just a quick check in then, October third, you have elementary school improvement.
Yep.
Decompression or debrief of the all boards meeting.
Yep.
And a budget discussion or a budget framing discussion.
Yeah.
Nothing else.
And also the subcommittee recommendations.
Not necessarily. We don't know when you guys are going to be able to meet. So right now we're just looking at those two.
I don't think we have time. Just trying to gauge time.
Yep.
You spend a good amount of time being concerned about time. That's it for that agenda?
Yeah.
We did.
And we have, if there are subcommittees to report out, then they can do the report out from our standing thing. But I think those are the two things that we need to, um, report with for that agenda.
You know, fifteen minutes for each school improvement plan will be two, the two elementary schools.
Maybe we could put some thought to that and take just a couple of minutes at the end of our, our September nineteenth, because I don't know that we came to consensus about how we want to do that. But maybe you and I can connect offline about how we structure some of the timing on this.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. So. Any discussion? All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want this?